Good evening and welcome to the January fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one special virtual meeting of the Board of Education on school reopening. I am the Board President Melissa Ellis. This meeting is being televised on AACPS TV and streamed live on AACPS YouTube channel. If we are interrupted during the broadcast of tonight's meeting, the meeting will be stopped and we will take a short recess until we can continue. If for some reason we cannot continue, we will notify you as soon as possible when a new meeting is scheduled. The Board Attorney has asked that I read the following statement. The Maryland Open Meetings Act, a state law, requires public meetings to be open to the public and to be held in places reasonably accessible to the individuals who would like to attend these meetings. The virtual format of this meeting of the Board of Education is due to the COVID-19 emergency and is necessary in light of the serious health risks associated with public gatherings, as well as the governor's and county executives' various executive orders limiting public gatherings. While a virtual meeting of this type was not envisioned by the Open Meetings Act, steps have been taken to ensure that this virtual meeting includes alternate accessibility features that the Open Meetings Act Compliance Board and the courts have reviewed and approved, broadcasting the meeting with video and audio on cable TV and on the web, and allowing written public comments to agenda items to be filed with the Board Office and considered by the Board. The Board Attorney has opined that the public access provided by this technology makes this virtual meeting reasonably accessible to the public and provides appropriate opportunity to observe the conduct of the Board's public business, consistent with prevailing best practices during this emergency situation, and therefore complies with the Open Meetings Please pause for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. "O God, we pray to administer that which is just in all educational policies. Being ever mindful of your guidance stirs to action with love, wisdom, and understanding." The pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Sorry, I'm just getting to the agenda. Item 1 dot zero three, establish the agenda order. Do I have a motion? No move. Do I have board consensus to accept the agenda order? Is there any dissent? All right, we have established the agenda order. Next will be item two, public comment. We will start with Jerry Groves. Oh, sorry, um, we will start with our roll call order to, um, establish who is here this evening. Um, I do believe we have a member here on audio. Actually, no, I see video. Anyway, um, so, um, I will call you in order. I believe I start tonight with, uh, Ms. Corkedel.
Present.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Uh, Ms. Antoine. Mr. Silkworth.
Present.
Ms. Frank.
Here.
Ms. Schallheim.
Here.
Ms. Tobin.
Here.
Now, uh, item two, public comment. We'll start this evening with Jerry Groves.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. While I appreciate having this opportunity, I wish I had the confidence that what I and others will be saying is actually heard and taken into consideration. On many occasions over the past year, there have been countless amount of emails sent, phone calls made, and other testimonials read to this board, and all too often, the overwhelming perception is that it falls on deaf ears. We had a very messy plan presented to us in the fall. This plan raised questions by most everyone in view, including the Board. In the three months since, has this plan been cleaned up at all? Based on questions that I see and raised on post daily from school staff and parents alike, it appears we still have a mess on our hands. Additionally, in October, the decision was made by the Board not to open schools based on where the COVID numbers stood at that time. Numbers provided by Dr. K and the County Health Department went into making this decision. These same metrics and measures were used in a prior vote when it appeared that we would be able to open schools. Now, these metrics are being asked to be adjusted? Why? Why are we moving the goalposts that have been in place since the summer? Is it to fit personal narratives or some political views of some board members perhaps? I'm a very proud third grade teacher here in the county, and there's no one, trust me, no one, that wants to be back in the classroom more than I do. I miss my students. I miss my kids. I miss the families. I miss my teammates. We all need to be back in the buildings, but folks, we have numbers currently that are out of control. October first, we were at nine point six individuals per hundred thousand affected. November first, fourteen point four. December first, twenty-nine point seven. January first, forty-six point six. And today, we're at sixty-two point six people. It would be simply irresponsible to open schools when the curve is pointing straight up instead of being flattened. Those teachers, school staff, students, and families who fall ill or worse, and it will happen unfortunately, will be for you to choose. It will fall on your shoulders if you choose to open schools in the next couple of weeks. I hope that you're okay sleeping at night knowing this. The responsible thing to do is to look at the science, look at the numbers, wait until we see numbers in decline. I appreciate your time tonight. Thank you so much. We need to get back to schools, but now is not the time unfortunately. Thank you.
Next, we have Jared Combs.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you for having me. I'm a teacher at Meade High School, and like the person before me, I would love to see schools reopen and stay open rather than risk an opening that can't be maintained. That being said, I'm unsure that we have taken the necessary steps to provide a safe return. COVID-19 represents a threat to the health of our students, staff, as well as all of our families. I'm looking for answers to pressing questions that we have to consider before reopening. I understand that county teachers should be receiving vaccinations shortly. That's good news. However, there's not yet sufficient evidence that the vaccine prevents infection, instead only limiting symptoms. If we have vulnerable family members at home, what is the county's plan to keep them safe? I would also like to know our plan for testing. Are there plans to use point of care tests on our students and educators onsite? We now know that young people are just as likely to transmit COVID, especially with data concerning the UK strain that was discovered this week within our county. What measures will be taken to test and isolate cases in schools? I am also concerned about ventilation. I teach in an old building. I have a window that does not open in my classroom. Earlier in the year, I reached out to school staff about ventilation and filtration concerns and have not yet received an answer from operations. How are we updating our facilities to ensure proper airflow? How are we ensuring that any indoor air that's recirculated is filtered sufficiently to remove the virus from the air? I would love to be able to use my classroom this year and see my students, but I'm concerned that without answers to these questions, we're making a plan that will not keep schools open for the rest of the year and instead shutter them in a matter of weeks. I don't want to re-enter the school only to close weeks later, and I certainly don't want to risk the health of our employees, students, and community by moving forward without a detailed plan. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Next, we have Colleen Lash.
Madam President, she has not signed in.
Our next speaker contacted us a short while ago and indicated that she would not be speaking tonight, so we'll move on to the next. Uh, next, we have Arlene Roos.
I believe she's muted.
Ms. Roos?
Yeah.
There we go.
I gotta sit down for a second, sorry.
Don't worry.
Sorry. Thank you very much for letting me speak. The goal of a return to in-person classroom learning is probably the most critical decision that our educators, parents, students, and Board of Education have to make collectively. This is the end game for all of us. Our teachers and school support are indeed essential components to this decision, as are our most precious commodity, our children. Let me be clear, education is happening on all levels at our schools. Teachers continue to teach beyond what they could have ever expected. They have gone from an in-person, hands-on classroom to a technology classroom that they wouldn't have ever imagined. They became efficient and proficient on how to educate and yes, touch our children through this platform. The business of schools is one of learning. We need to have public health and personal health taken into account for that business to succeed. Everyone that supports this business must be taken into consideration. Classrooms are a unique challenge. Cases continue to climb above the metrics that were being considered for hybrid opening. In addition, the mutated strain has now entered the mix. The white knight is coming, but the journey is not a quick one. The vaccine will most likely become available for the first dose and then the second dose a few, a few weeks later, hopefully by the end of March. Our staff need this so that we can reach the best potential for return to in-person learning. This has been recommended by our Health Department experts until we can reach that goal, along with proper PPE, ventilation, transportation. This gives our teachers, families, and students the fighting chance to be in the building. While students may have a choice of hybrid, our teachers will be called upon to be in the classroom. We were asked not to travel, not to be with our own families and friends during the holidays, and we're still on this journey. The schools need to follow the same path. We each have our own families, but together we make up a larger family. Let's continue as that family on this journey so that we can get to the end game, and we can stand together alive and well and celebrate that victory. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Good evening, Dr. Arlato and members of the Board. My name is Sebastian Serrano, and I am both a county resident and a science teacher. I'm here to provide an update to the analysis I presented in October regarding COVID-19 in our county. In October, I defined two metrics, the COVID leak and the gamma coefficient. The COVID leak is the constant value of daily new cases we could expect. Our behavior as a community can be cyclical. We go through times when people are extra vigilant and times when people are laxer. However, these cycles eventually settle to a constant number. In October, I said the COVID leak was about fifty cases per day. The gamma coefficient represents the stability of the cycles. When positive, the cycles grow smaller towards stability. When negative, the cycles destabilize. In October, I warned the cycles might have destabilized, and within two weeks, county COVID data exploded. Using the Python programming language to conduct a multivariate gradient descent, I can say that since August, our COVID data has resembled a quadratic function consistent with the COVID leak and timing of the cycle destabilization. Cases are increasing at an accelerating rate. It can start small, which is why in August, there were talks of reopening buildings. By late October, the increase, while still gradual, was on the verge of erupting. It has wreaked havoc since. January second to ninth had nearly three hundred and fifty cases per day. The operative word in virtual learning is "learning." We still present information, demonstrate concepts, build camaraderie, and practice. Learning comes from rising to the occasion. It is neither easy nor fair, and it never was. Teachers exist to restore balance to this process. I am privileged to log into Google Meet every day and witness boys and girls, black, brown, and white children, and native Marylanders and immigrants learning together. We must stop selling the lie that learning ended because I refuse to turn to my students tomorrow and tell them that they've accomplished nothing. I will not lie to them. Stabilize the cycles and reduce the COVID leak. Then buildings can open.
I come to you as one who is a sister of a school nurse in, in South Carolina with hundreds of students. I'm intimately aware of all the complexities that have gone into that when I talked to her. They've been open since September, and they have been extremely successful. They've had to deal with issues, but they've been in school and they've done well. I come to you as one who has two sister-in-laws and many friends that are Anarundale County's public school teachers. I've talked to them many, many, many times and am intimately aware of what their perspective is. I come to you as a healthcare professional who works in a local hospital and has been very intimately aware of the toll that this very real and very ugly virus has taken on our community. I also come to you as a mother of four young kids. As a mother who was told in March that we'd have a two-week break and then our children would be returned to school, and then two months later, I remember seeing a social media post from a teacher who said, "Don't worry. It's evident at this point, your kids are not going to return to school for the rest of the year. They're going to be okay. We will be waiting for them in the classroom in September with open arms, and we will catch them up." I held on to that, but September came and went, and then October, and then November, December, January, and now we're coming up on a full year of no in-person school and no option for in-person school for our children when they have been in-person everywhere else in the country this entire time. I have friends and family members everywhere in the country, and the vast majority of them are in school. So we need to stop thinking of all the roadblocks. It is possible for kids and staff to be in school safely, and that's where our focus needs to be. Uh, okay, thank you for your time. I just want to say that while learning has not ended, I agree with that teacher, learning has not ended, it absolutely has been compromised. Thank you.
Hi, thank you for your time, for my, allowing me to speak, and I have to echo the same sentiments. I feel like all the others have been teachers that have been speaking, and let me say first and foremost, I come from a family, a long line of teachers, principals, administrators. My husband and I have volunteered countless hours in the schools to the point where my husband's recognized numerous times, one year, having more volunteer hours than anyone else in all of Anarundale County. So when I say that I am so disappointed in our school system and so disappointed in how we are failing our children, it is with a heavy, heavy heart, not just for my child, but for the school system that we have so supported. I do not know how this has happened. I echo the sentiments that every other school system, not just in our country, in countries with far higher numbers, New York City with far higher numbers, have found a way to have their children back in school. I would hate to think that this has to do with money or politics or any, anything else because private schools are all back in school. So are you telling me if I pay for it? Even SAC programs within our schools are open, but my kid can't go to school. We are not, they are not being educated. I don't know who is under that false assumption, but they are not. Teachers are babysitting their own children and teaching their, I cannot stop my day to help my child. I work. I was given a choice to go back to work. I was furloughed. They asked me if I wanted to go back to work. I'm back to work, my choice, but I could have stayed on unemployment. If someone has a health concern, then they need to take a leave of absence or go on unemployment, just like anybody else in this country is right now. They need to find their own childcare, just like anybody else in this country is right now. We are failing our children. They are not edu, being educated. There is absolutely no reason why they cannot safely be back in school. Statistics prove it, other schools have proven it, and we are just failing it. Thank you for your time.
My apologies if that's mispronunciation.
Oh, yeah, hi. All right. Well, Sheriff Cephas again. I too spoke with my, uh, when my fellow Annapolis High School person, colleague spoke. This time, I don't have as much to say because I've been dealing with life, as everyone has. I would like to remind everyone that it's important for us to follow the metrics and listen to our County Health Department, and I too have children within the system. I'm grateful that I have been, I am an educator, so I haven't had to be furloughed. And for the teachers that, you know, for the people that wind up getting sick, I guess my question becomes, where will we get the substitutes? Do we have a plan for that? Because right now, I, um, take a day off and I'm, um, causing a problem with my colleagues because they have to cover my classes. And I just want to remind you that private schools have lot, smaller population, so we're dealing with more numbers, and I have already emailed Ms. Frank about other topics. She is the designated person I'm supposed to bother, so I will continue to maintain communication with her. And thank you for remembering, science is helpful, and all the schools that are opening and the districts that are opening are closing and opening and closing and opening, and I don't think it's worth chaos when we can be consistent and then bring the kids that need it in, uh, most first and gradually do this when the numbers allow. Great, thanks.
Lori Smith?
Uh, hello, can you hear me? Okay, great. Um, it's now been, Lori Smith, hi. It's now been three hundred and seven days since our schools closed the doors to flatten the curve for two weeks. The virtual environment has not met the needs of many students. For those students, a choice to go to school and at least a hybrid option is called for. Schools, districts around the country and the state have successfully been doing in-person classes since August. Private and public schools, or private schools in Anarundale County are doing it. Do our children really deserve less? Miami-Dade Public Schools are open, one of the largest systems in the country. If they can do it, so can we. I have a senior in high school. She isn't a true introvert. While she is maintaining her grades, her social and emotional development have gone backwards. High school is more than academics. It is learning to become an adult, which comes from interacting with other teens, watching so, watching social cues, working together, and so on. The introverts are retreating back into themselves. My daughter has not seen another teen in person unless forced to. These children need a choice to be in person. How are children's social, emotional, and mental development factoring into the board's decisions? If we're going to look at health, we need to look at the health of the whole child. Metrics need to be weighed with all this in mind. We cannot go by a sole number that was created last summer. There have been updated research and information in the three hundred days. We know more. We can do better. This map from the county website shows where all the cases are in the last seven days. Here, for instance, this zip code, whoops, down here, there have been twelve, twelve cases in the last seven days. That's it. But they count as a case rate of thirty due to their population, but really, it's only twelve. Thirty sounds scary, twelve, not so much. The hybrid plan may not be perfect, but no plan ever is. That's why it's a plan. Many private and public schools are using the same plan. They can tweak it, you can make it better, but it's a start and an opportunity for many children who need it. I respectfully request that you vote to go forward with, at a minimum, a hybrid option as soon as possible for those who need and desire that choice. Thank you.
Ms. Howell, can you, uh, update us on, um, the volume of public comment received in writing? So, the only, uh, thing we have left on our agenda is the reopening plan. Um, so I just wanted to, um, for the sake of, um, sorry, there's something on my screen here. Um, so, for the sake of the flow of the meeting, I just wanted to establish an order. I intend to ask our superintendent if he has a recommendation for us, and then, um, I will open it up for board members to ask questions and, um, before any motions are offered. And so with that, uh, Dr. Arlato, do you have a recommendation for school reopening?
Yes, Madam President, thank you for the opportunity. Um, I do indeed have a recommendation, uh, and so my recommendation is that in following the advice of our county health officer, we should remain virtual until early March. This will allow for the current and anticipated surge to subside and metrics to move closer to those recommended by our department of, by our county Department of Health, the Maryland Department of Health, and the CDC. Also, I believe we have an obligation as a public entity to not contribute to the surge and overburden our healthcare workers and facilities. And lastly, and most importantly, vaccines are now available. This was not the case two weeks ago or three weeks ago. We now know that vaccines are available, and our school system employees are soon to be receiving that vaccine. Extending our virtual learning into early March will give us time to work with our Department of Health to implement a vaccine administration plan for our school system employees. Dr. Kaliana Rahm has shared with me today and, and within the last hour and a half or so, that he anticipates beginning to vaccinate our employees, um, by Monday, March, February, excuse me, by Monday, February first, if not sooner. If all goes according to plan and given the available vaccine supply, we should be able to vaccinate all of our employees by the end of February. So with that is my recommendation, Madam President.
Thank you, Dr. Arlato. Um, so I will start in tonight's roll call order, Ms. Corkedel. And this is questions only, everyone.
Well, I am gonna, um, accept that rule and say thank you and gratitude to the staff and Dr. Arlato, though, as a predicator. Um, I know that you've been working, you know, you and Dr. Kaliana Rahm are pretty much, you know, in the virtual hip, uh, connection, um, because of the frequency, because of all these changes, but, um, so it sounds like it's very encouraging. Um, are, can you give us an indication, um, of if the plan, I know at our last meeting, he had talked about, um, that you guys were working on developing a strategy, and so has, is that been finalized, or are we expecting it to be finalized based on the new information?
So it hasn't been finalized because we, um, a, as you well know, and this is, this is for not just, um, you and your colleagues, uh, Mrs. Corkedel, but, but the public that's listening, we as a school system, um, aren't going to be administering the vaccine, right? We're educators, so we have to rely on our healthcare professionals, um, to actually administer, put the shots into the arms of our So we have to rely on our healthcare professionals to actually administer, put the shots into the arms of our staff. So what we've been asked to do is we've been asked to survey our, our staff. And that is not just educators in the classroom. That includes our custodians and our food service workers and our secretaries and our administrators and all of our staffs that will, that work in the school system. And we have now surveyed them, are in the process of surveying them to see who wants to receive the vaccination. So we have a raw number that we can share with the department of health as to the number of doses they will need to inoculate our staffs, those that wish to be vaccinated. At the same time, we are putting some final touches on a priority list. Because we won't have enough vaccines to bring everybody in on the same day and vaccinate everybody on the same day. Of course, we will have to stagger that based on the availability of vaccines from one week to the next. And so we've been asked by the department of health to put together a priority order, which we are doing now. Of those that, of course, want to be vaccinated and in priority order, and how we will accomplish that over several weeks. Dr. Kalyan Araman believes, based on his best guesses of our staff and the numbers and what he has seen across the healthcare workers that have gotten vaccinated thus far, Mrs. Corkedel, is that he believes that, that by the end of February, if they start February one, they could have all of our, the complete Annapolis County Public School staff vaccinated by the end of February. That would be with the first dose. Then you've got to come back and start to get the second dose. And it all depends on which vaccine, whether it's a twenty-one day wait or a twenty-eight day wait. And we have no control of that, and actually neither does Dr. Kalyan Araman and the department of health. They get whatever vaccine they are given to administer. They don't get to choose. So, so that's what I know now, and we are putting the final touches on what will be an implementation plan that we would hand to the department of health. And so we could then contact those employees and say, okay, today's your day, and this is where you're going to be vaccinated.
Thank you very much for the clarification. I know that the feds are, you know, it's still in manufacturing and the, the second dose stuff. And yeah, there's going to be some coordination that I don't think there's enough information to share with us comprehen, you know, that, that would be comprehensive, you know, appropriate now. But thank you so very much. My other question is, as it relates to the, we, we have the survey out, of course, for the parent and the community, for all of us who have, have students to respond to. Could you give us a little insight as to how the coordination with the staff is going to look like? Both in class and out of class, because, you know, not the direct in-class has a direct effect on the in-class, of course, and its success.
Yes, ma'am. So that parent survey, as you well know, is, is live until Sunday. So through this weekend, and it will close on Sunday. At that point, just like we did and our plan was in the fall, we will take that survey data. We then have to compile that survey data from the parents. The parents have, we've requested information as to whether they want their child to remain fully virtual or be in the hybrid environment and whether they would access transportation, and then if they have a preference based on the availability of the teacher. And so we will take that information and we will feed it to the individual schools. The principals will then have to create class lists and based on that grade level and the request of the parent and the availability of the staff member and create class lists simultaneously. Those that are eligible for and requesting transportation, we have to send that compiled data to the transportation office and they will then create the, the, the bus lists and contact those families as to their, as to their availability of transportation. So all of that has to happen. We, we would begin that process as soon as that survey closes on Sunday evening.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Smith.
Thank you for that update, Dr. Arlato. Just so I'm clear, your recommendation is to remain virtual throughout the month of February and then start the reopening process sometime in March. And is that depending on the metrics or we'll open regardless of the metrics?
So that's a, that's a great question, Mr. Smith. We'll continue. My advice is that we'll continue, that we should continue to take the advice of our health officer. But keep in mind, we've talked about metrics up to this point. We've not had a vaccine available, right? We talked about metrics in, in the spring of last year. We talked about metrics in the summer. We talked about metrics in the fall. A vaccine was not available. That changes the calculus. That changes the equation. And this is coming from Dr. Kalyan Araman. So if vaccines, if we've gotten our staffs vaccinated, then that changes the calculus with regard to metrics. We would begin, my understanding is we begin to bring staffs back and students back into buildings with them being vaccinated. But I can't say for sure based on the metrics because that would be, that's not my call. That's the call of our public health officials. But it certainly changes the calculus as to, and I, I would feel, I would feel much more confident that if our staff was being vaccinated through the month of February, that we could hit a target date of that first week of March, possibly March first, which is a Monday, to, to begin to bring back our students. We would still have to bring back in the hybrid model. We would still have to bring students back wearing masks, social distancing, and all the other protocols that are needed or, and have been in place up to this point, or we plan to put in place up to this point when students return. But the vaccine changes that, that, that calculus a great deal.
Of course, and that's only if, I guess, teachers take the vaccine. What about teachers that don't take the vaccine? What's, what are their options?
Their options are to, if, if they can apply for an accommodation. But once the, once the vaccine has been made available to our educators and to our staffs, the expectation is that they would begin to return to work. Unless they have a, an accommodation, an approved accommodation. But otherwise, they would be asked, because not taking the vaccine is a personal choice.
Well, I hear that and okay, yeah. And I think those are my questions for now. Thank you, Dr. Arlato.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Antoine?
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Good. Dr. Arlato, good evening. Thank you for that recommendation. My first question would be the preparation for the basics, the mask, the hand sanitizers, the hand washing stations. Would we be adequately prepared for, if we should go even back into a hybrid model? Would we be, we be prepared for our students to return with these parameters in place and sufficient enough to cover them each day until the end of the school year?
Yes, ma'am. Those things are in place now.
Great. And so little candy gets off the bus. She had her mask on, on the bus. She jumps off the bus. I did because I'm going back and into, to school. Would, how would that kind of scenario be taken care of? We don't necessarily need to call the parent. Would there be masks on hand in case a student forgets his or her mask?
Yes, ma'am. We'll have disposable masks both on the bus. If there were a situation where a bus driver needed to get one to a student. And we'll have them, we have them available in the schools should a student need one.
Yes, sir. And so that's my A and B question. My second question is, I, I misunderstood, I think, about the availability of the vaccination to all of our staff. The plan is to get it all, to all of our staff by the end of February. Is that right?
Yes, ma'am. That was the most recent conversation I had with Dr. Kalyan Araman. I, he and I spoke at length twice today, once this morning, and again this evening after the governor's press conference. And, and his, his best guess is that he would be able to get all of our staff vaccinated by the end of February with the first dose.
Right. And then, so, so in order for a staff member to notify, notify you that they are ready and willing to take the vaccination, what is, what is that process, please?
We have, we have sent out a survey with an electronic form that we've asked all staff to complete, Mrs. Antoine. And we're asking them to, when, i- i- it basically says that when the vaccine becomes available, would you as an Annapolis County Public School employee like to take advantage of that and be vaccinated? It is not a mandate. It is a personal choice. But we need the raw data to give the department of health so they know how many doses they'll need to complete our entire staff. So we have full, between full and part-time employees, roughly twelve thousand employees. We know that based on the data of vaccinations around the country, we won't get one hundred percent of those that will want to be vaccinated. So whatever that number is, is the, is the raw data that we would give to the department of health.
Excellent. Thank you, Dr. Arlato.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Selfworth?
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Arlato, for the recommendation. I totally agree with you that the vaccination, the vaccine is a game changer. And having said that, I have no further, I have no question.
Ms. Frank?
Definitely just wanna thank you, Dr. Arlato. I know a phenomenal amount of work has been going into this. And I had asked a couple of questions that I had sent you ahead of time. And I, I think that you pretty much answered all of those in your report. So I guess the, so I do appreciate you covering all of those bases already. Are there any significant changes to the previous plan? If we've talked about them, I haven't really heard them. If there are, could you just let me know if you have them available?
Yes, ma'am. So there are, the, when you say plan, I'm assuming you're referring to the hybrid model. Is that appropriate?
Yes, the previous hybrid plan that we had discussed.
Right, right. So, so no, there is, the hybrid plan is the hybrid plan. We talked about that back in October and November and, and even in December, that it is not much, no, nothing significant. It will be a combination of, of some, half the students in the classroom and half the students remaining at home virtually, two days a week. And they will be, students will be separated from each class either as A-day students, meaning they'll come to school on Mondays and Tuesdays, or a B-day student, and they'll come to school on Thursdays and Fridays. Will be virtual on Wednesdays, and that'll be a time for us to clean the buildings. That basic plan has not changed.
Okay, thank you very much. I do not have any further questions. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Ms. Schellheim?
Yes, thank you so much for this. I am, Dr. Arlato, I, I am encouraged. This is encouraging news. I think we should all feel encouraged. I think that I agree with you, well, I know I agree with you about that this changes the landscape for all you folks listening at home and trying to catch up, just like I am in this meeting. This, this, it doesn't void the metrics surely, but it changes the way we interpret them for sure. And so I guess my first question is, if your, if your recommendation is to get us back in around March one, hopefully a March one date. But we still have case rate numbers to think about in some, in some way, because it won't go away, it just will change. Are you, will you come back to us if, if Dr. K closer to that time has said, guys, I know you, we've given you all the vaccine, but there's this, there's the case rates and these other moving parts. And I, and I, I either, I either think you're a go or I think you're a no-go, and how that way into, to what we're deciding tonight? Will, will you, how will we handle that sort of information?
So, so let me begin where you began. I am, I am, I won't say that I'm giddy with the concept of getting our students back into schools as quickly as possible, but we are closer now than we have been since last March. I am, I, I just didn't think two weeks ago that we'd be having this conversation right now because two or three weeks ago, vaccines and our, and the accessibility to our staff was not really part of the mix. Remember, several weeks ago, we were really talking about testing and how maybe testing can help us change the metrics. Well, now, testing is not the ongoing conversation. It's about vaccines, and that's incredibly exciting. I mean, it just is incredibly exciting, and, and I think we are so much closer to where we all want to be, which is getting our students and our staffs back in our building. So that said, absolutely, I'll continue to keep the board and public informed if Dr. Kalyan Araman, if, if we were to get to March, I think your question is, or closer to that time and, excuse me.
Bless you.
And something changed the metrics and there was a red flag that needed to be raised and we needed to slow things down. We would certainly share that with the board and the public. But I am, as I, in my response to Mr. Smith, so much more confident that we can meet a target date of opening in March as if the vaccines become available and we start that vaccination program at the beginning of February, if not sooner.
Okay, great. I have a comment, and then of course I have my second question. My comment is that we still have to think about testing. I hope that there's still talk about doing testing. This isn't a, it has to be a holistic approach to battling this. And I think there's still, there's still a lot of benefit to testing. I know that's not his, your focus with Dr. Kalyan Araman in your discussions right now. But I encourage you to continue to have those conversations with him because that'll help us pick up where there's hotspots in terms of student outbreaks. And we also, the, the other piece of this we don't know, of course, is whether or not once, one, one, once one has been inoculated, if that just protects oneself from getting really sick or if it also protects against transmission. I think that's the great unknown. I watch far too much news these days. I think that's obvious. My second question is about the students, because we haven't talked about the students yet. We have students hurting and their mental health is hurting and their educational lives are hurting. Although, I have to say, the teachers are knocking it out of the park, and I adore every single one of you. And for all of the haters that say that you're not working, I can tell you that they work harder now than they ever have before. And they are all saints, okay? So we can stop that, that myth right there. But, but you know, we, we all want to go back into classrooms. And so I hope that the plan is pre-K to twelve. And then I'd also, so I'd like you to comment on that, and I'd also like you to comment on the spring sports season because some of the reason why some kids come to school, and I'm not a sports fan, y'all, I'm just gonna throw it out there, sorry. But I know it's very important to our students. To some of our students, it is, it is everything. And it makes all other aspects of one's life better. And so when we get back in schools, can we also look forward to some sort of spring sports season?
So on your, your, your first piece, Mrs. Schellheim, your first part of that question regarding pre-K to twelve. I would be able to open the buildings and say, everybody's back in. But this is going to be, the reopening plan will be predicated on the availability of the, of the vaccine. So even if we, even, we don't have, there, Dr. Kalyan Araman does not anticipate having nine, ten, twelve thousand vaccines just for the public pre-K to twelve educators and our staffs. So we wouldn't be able to inoculate everybody all at once and then therefore bring people back. I think what we're talking about is having priority groups of staff to get, to get vaccinated. And we would roll that over the course of the month of February and then come back and redo that over the course of the month of March. So we would get our, our priority small group students back in first. They would be, sort of those staffs would be at the top of the list, our specialty centers, and others that in our small groups, our CAT centers. uh, uh, and others that, in our small groups, our CAT centers, and then our pre-K to five educators and those staffs, and then identifying, um, uh, possibly grade six and 12, and then adding some of the middle school and the high school grades over time, because the bottom line is, we just not gonna have, the, I shouldn't say we, the Department of Health is just not gonna have enough vaccines to give everybody all at once, and it's important for folks to know that, um, that would, even if there were enough vaccinations, we wouldn't, the recommendation would not be vaccinate everybody all at once, because there can be side effects to the vaccine, and if everybody were vaccinated on the same day, and then they all had complications, you'd have your entire staffs down and out. And so they stagger them, they do, they're doing that at the hospitals, and they're doing that at other places, they don't do the staffs all at once, um, or the residents all at once, they're doing it all, um, in a staggered tiered format. So, um, I, I'm confident that, um, rolling into your second question, that, uh, that we can have spring sports, um, we've got a plan to start spring sports up, and, and I'm confident that with the vaccination schedule, all goes according to plan, we can have what, what would resemble a spring sports season. That will include our other extracurricular and co-curricular activities as well, but since you mentioned the word athletic sports in particular, uh, in fact, I had a meeting this afternoon with our team about planning for an implementation of a spring season. We'd also like to, remember, we have a, we're in the middle of our, we're coming to the end of our winter season now, our winter season has been completely virtual, we're about to begin our fall season in the middle of February, and then we'll have fall season for a number of weeks, and then we'll go into the spring season. Uh, I'm fairly confident if all goes according to plan with the vaccinations, that we should be able to salvage something of a fall season, and bringing students and their teams together, uh, for a fall season this early spring, and then having a, um, uh, a, a spring season as well.
Okay, um, but is it, so by the end of March, can we see pre-K to 12 back? I mean, what's the timeline?
I would, I would, I would hope so, again, if all goes according to plan with regard to the availability, uh, of the vaccinations, because we have to rely on the Department of Health getting the vaccinations, securing them, we have to rely on somebody else to deliver that vaccine, it could be Department of Health, um, uh, and I know that Dr. Kalayana Ramen is talking to some other entities that would help us do this more quickly in delivering the vaccinations to our staffs.
Okay, absolutely, yeah.
Not information I can share yet, but we're talking about some other entities that he would make available, um, that would speed this process up, so I would like to think that we could have everybody back in, um, uh, in that hybrid format by the end of March, yes.
That would be wonderful, 'cause at, at this point, and while in the fall, I might have, I did, if, I mean firstly, let me just, I'm gonna say one more comment, and then I'll turn it over to, to the, to the next, I know, I'm, I'm talking a lot, if I knew then what I know now, I totally would have voted to go back in the fall, and if I had done that, if I knew then what I know now, and we were back in the fall, and I understand the staggering of grades at that point, I, I no longer, I no longer like that idea, I just wanna get everyone back, you know, everyone, K, pre-K to 12 is back as quickly as possible, I know you do too, I'm really grateful for all of this, um, like I said, I'm encouraged, I'm sure I will have more questions, um, and I'm just, uh, thank you so much, yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, Dr. Tobin?
Uh, yes, thank you, Dr. Alato, for your recommendation, uh, like everyone else, I'm, uh, delighted to hear that there may be some light, um, at the end of a very long tunnel, and we'll all be rather blinded at this point by that, by that light, uh, it's been a long dark time, so, um, so, a couple of questions, uh, again, um, a comment before my first question, um, it's, if we now have, we follow your recommendation, we have now some time, uh, a month thereabouts, um, do you anticipate reexamining the hybrid plan, revisiting, uh, some potential tweaks? Uh, obviously, we've, we've heard, we've, we've all had a lot of emails over the last few days, and, uh, and over time, and there have definitely been questions, both from parents and teachers, about what issues are, how some issues are gonna be resolved in hybrid, and a few things that I've heard and, and have been in my own mind, uh, as examples, um, there's still a lot of concern about what exactly it's gonna look like if a teacher is teaching both a group at home and a group in the classroom, and the logistics of this, everything from, uh, you know, there's a need presumably to have kids on the same document, right? It, it doesn't make sense to, to pass out paper documents to one group and have those at home on a computer, I mean, these are, these are details that obviously, um, it's, it's not our job to tweak, but that is something that, it seems to me, there's time now, and especially if you start with bringing smaller groups in, um, to, to see, to sort of beta test, to see how this works, because it does seem to me there are some potential, uh, issues around that, that we have time now to, to revisit, um, and, uh, also just questions about how, you know, the extent to which a teacher really can attend to both groups, um, and see how this actually works out in, in play for, for individual teachers, so I guess my question is, you know, is there, is there, uh, do you intend to revisit that, and is there, is there a way to sort of test this out in our smaller groups slowly as we reopen, so that we are alerted to some things that, you know, may sound great on paper, but once teachers are trying to juggle it, uh, it doesn't work quite as well?
So thank you, Dr. Tobin, for the question, and, and I'll ask Dr. McMahon, uh, to join, uh, in the response, but, but my, my initial response is, um, uh, all of our plans are up for tweaking, because we've never done this before, so, um, when somebody's got another idea, or a better mousetrap, then let's try it out, right? Because we need to learn. What I can tell you from our research across the country and within the state of Maryland regarding, um, models, return to school models, and in particular this, the hybrid model, the, the basic model's not gonna change much, i- it's just not. Um, it is a matter of having some students physically in front of you, and some students at home in the virtual environment. Um, that is the definition of this, of this hybrid model we're talking about, and it's working, um, uh, in, uh, it, it's how, I, I've heard reference already this evening about the private schools in Anarone County, that's how they're operating, as well as several school systems in the state of Maryland, I heard reference to in comments, that's how they're operating, and a- across the country, the hybrid model. I am not declaring by any way, shape, or form that it is ideal, it is not, it is not the ideal form of delivery for our students, but it does give us the ability for, and you heard from some parents, you've heard from many parents, about the choice, they can make that choice if they so choose, um, it gives us the ability to bring students together with their classmates in a physical form, it gives us the ability to have teachers in front of their students in a physical form, yes, are they going to also manage those that are at home? The answer is yes. Is that ideal? Again, I go back to my comment, it is not. Um, uh, but we will, uh, we will adapt and we'll adjust as our teachers have, they've done a phenomenal job, um, I do not believe that we are failing our children in the virtual environment, and I do not believe we will fail our children in a hybrid environment. I believe we will continue to love and care for our students, and educate them to the best of our ability, uh, and I think they'll continue to learn, and then they'll continue to thrive. Not every student is gonna learn and thrive in exactly the same way, and exactly the same amount in this hybrid format, so, um, so I'll go back to my, my, my earlier point, Dr. Tobin, 'cause it's a wonderful question, um, it, the, 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 the virtual model between now and March, I'm sorry, the, the hybrid model between now and March is not gonna change drastically, as we continue to, we, we have visited school systems that are using it, we're doing the research, we're watching how people are doing it, and we are learning from them, and we will continue to, um, uh, to make changes as we learn, because at this age, nothing's etched in stone, 'cause we've never done it before, right? Um, and so we'll continue, we'll continue to do that work. Dr. McMahon, would you like to share something, uh, with regard to that research and the work on the hybrid model?
Right, I, I, I think you covered the waterfront pretty much, Dr. Alato, I would just add one thing, in the fall, when we did have our CAT North teachers teaching from their classroom, they actually did pilot this, so they were teaching live at CAT North in their labs with, you know, whether it's electricity, or whether it's masonry, whatever it was, they were live, and they had students at home simultaneously, and so these, uh, these professionals were amazing at being the first people off the ground for us, really attempting to do this work, and I won't tell you it's easy, but I will tell you, they were energized by the opportunity.
And I, and I got a chance, thank you, Dr. McMahon, for mentioning that, I, 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 I forgot to, um, unfortunately forgot to mention the CAT North teachers, because I got an opportunity to see that in action, and talk to the students in the class that were there in person, and talk to the students that were on, uh, the teacher's laptop, and they take advantage of, you talked about, you gave an example, Dr. Tobin, about sharing documents, um, and, and we've talked about that, and planned for that, with the document camera, and the cords that were purchased, so it can hook up to the smart board, and the teacher's laptop, that the students in the classroom and the students at home can be looking at the same documents, the same information, and so we've, we've technologically arranged for that as well. But one of the things I think that is critical, Dr. Tobin, I'm sorry, I'm going on far too long, is that we need to get the teachers back into their classrooms, so that they can start to, um, play with that technology, um, even in an empty classroom, and they can teach virtually from their classrooms, those students that are, their students that are at home, while they're sort of, and I'm gonna use the term pretending that they've got a hybrid group of students in front of them, and make sure that the smart board, the document camera, and their, their, their laptop are all working and coordinated, so we can work out those, um, uh, if there are any tweaks that are needed technologically, before the students actually arrive physically in the classroom in early March. I would like to get our teachers back in, so they can be doing that work, and, and they'll, um, uh, their, their, their genius at what they do, and they'll certainly inform us about things that are working or not working, that we can then share with their colleagues and across the school system.
Okay, thank you, that's, that is very helpful, and I, you know, I, I'm gonna just add something, uh, before my second question, because the private school thing keeps coming up, and I may be, uh, in a unique position on this board, in that I chaired the Board of, the Board of Trustees of a private school, and I'm here to tell you, there is no comparison between what a private school can do, and what a public school system can do, those are apples and oranges, and for those listening out in the public, they need to understand that, and so I just, I just wanna put that out there on the record from my own particular experience, um, to, to make that clear, and also, uh, to what you're saying, what's happening in the school systems that are open, either private or public, is exactly a version of the hybrid that has been described by you, um, so, thank you. Um, so my second question, uh, is kind of a ver- addition to Ms. Schellheim's question about testing, um, obviously, uh, as we've all agreed, I think, the vaccine is a game changer, but the virus is, is, is here, um, and so I'd like to hear a little more about what contact tracing will look like, because once we've got people back in buildings, how, in whatever groups and however large, the fact just remains that we still may have cases, and so I'd just like to know sort of what protocols are in place, what, what you anticipate the, uh, the communications mechanism will be for a class, a school, the larger community, if there's an outbreak, and what the protocols for quarantining, shutting down, I mean, how, how do you anticipate that as we, um, as we move into, in person, in, in whatever form? You're muted.
I had gone the entire day of meetings without doing that, so seven o'clock at night, that's not too bad, I'm so proud of myself, so, thank you. Um, we can anticipate that when we begin to bring students and staff back in the buildings, we will have positive cases, that's just statistically speaking, we will have positive cases. So your question is a good one, we have posted information on our website, under Health and Safety tab, um, that talks about, um, uh, what will take place, but in short, if there is a positive case of a staff member in a cla- of a, a teacher in a classroom, a staff member in a building, a student in a classroom, um, we will, of course, make direct contact with the Department of Health, and the Department of Health will guide us on what needs to happen, it could very well be the, um, the quarantining of a group of close contact students, it could be the quarantining of that entire class, or classes that that student were in, or it could be a quarantining and a, and a closing of the entire school. We have seen a variety of those things happen in the private schools and the public schools in the state of Maryland and across the country, as they have opened, those, there have been a variety of schools that have been opened that then had to close, typically for about two weeks, and then reopen, there have been individual students or small groups of students that were considered close contacts of a identified positive case that were asked to quarantine, but not the entire class, or it could be that entire class, what Dr. Kalayana Ramen, uh, refers to as a cohort, um, so yes, all of those things could very well happen, which means those students that are affected would then, um, or the entire school, if it were necessary, if there were an outbreak in the school, would revert back to the virtual instruction. During that time that they're away from school and quarantined, they would revert back to virtual instruction, and then, when, when, when we're given the green light and all is clear, we'll then bring those students, staff members, and/or the entire school back into the building.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Um, Dr. Alato, can you help me understand, did I hear you, did I hear correctly that Dr. K said today that, um, February 1st is the target date for beginning vaccines for our teachers?
Correct, that was the date that he shared with me, is February 1st, if not, if not sooner.
Okay, but if not sooner, part. Okay, because, um, I don't think I'm jumping ahead of things here, 'cause he posted it on his social media page, but our county executive posted, and there's an article on the Capitol today, that, um, we are moving into Phase 1B, um, and so those, those vaccines will start to be administered on Monday.
Mm-hmm.
So that is possible, okay.
But that's, but, so 1B, and, and I'm not the, this is not my expertise, but my understanding in conversations with Dr. Kalayana Ramen, uh, and certainly two times today, is that that 1B is not, i- i- is, there, there is a, there's a list of, um, uh, of, of folks that qualify within 1B.
Mm-hmm.
Educators, our school staffs are part of that list.
Right.
It's up to the, each local jurisdiction to decide who they want to vaccinate first, and they prioritize that list. My understanding is that we in Anarone County will be prioritizing those that are 75 years of age or older, um, those that are, uh, in long-term care facilities, and childcare workers. Childcare workers are, is childcare not the K-12 ed- the pre-K-12 education world?
Right.
I believe I have that correct.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Yes, ma'am.
And then, uh, actually, real quick, I wanna make a statement, 'cause, um, while I'm thinking of it, um, there, there were questions about the preparation of our schools and the, um, the cleaning protocols and so forth, um, I just wanna add that, um, it's been mentioned before, um, we were able to talk, take a walk through a few schools, um, so just to let- it, it's been mentioned before, um, we were able to talk, take a walk through a few schools. Um, so just to let um, everyone know, the work that has already been going on is very evident. You walk into a classroom and you can see a big bucket of um wipes and hand sanitizer, huge um uh canisters of those. And then you can see there's the automatic um hand sanitizer dispensers throughout hallways, throughout the schools. Um, so, you know, I, we're not, we're not starting from scratch. The work has been going on and so our buildings will be prepared whenever we need them to be. Um, so my other question is um about high school and middle school. Um you, you know, uh previously, we were focused on elementary and then middle school and high school. Now we've um discussed um already this evening the idea that the only thing that will keep us tiering them is the availability of the vaccine. So if if there was um um, if we did, were able to get enough supply to get staff vaccinated, we wouldn't have to tier them or maybe not very far apart, right? So um can you tell us about what kind of planning there has been up to this point? Or um, I know the concern was for high school is how to cohort these kids um as well as for middle school. So do you have any updates um on that?
Certainly. And, and Dr. McMahon can, can join us uh for part of the response. Uh, but the uh, the answer is yes, the, the planning is ongoing, has been ongoing uh regarding what the secondary schools will look like. In short, um, you can't really cohort secondary students. You can cohort to a degree middle school students because they're in teams by grade level. So that lends itself to doing some cohorting. Um, but at the high school level, it's virtually impossible. Students move from English to math, the social studies to PE to art, and they all do it at different times on different schedules. Um, a- and so uh that said, uh basically, the, the plan at the secondary level, students will um follow their schedule and go from period one to period two to lunch to period three to period four. They would follow that schedule and move about the building. The difference being that you would, um, a- as you alluded to, thank you for your comments, Ms. Ellis, about um, the buckets of, of um uh disinfecting wipes. Because we'll expect those students that at the end of the class to wipe down their desks and their personal space and on their way out the door, throw that wipe into the trash can so that desk is cleared and, and disinfected for the next student that's gonna use it in the next period. There are gallon pump bottles of hand sanitizer that teachers will ask students to clean their hands when they walk into the classroom. And then when they exit the classroom, there are the hand sanitizer stations throughout the hallways. Students may very well see very specific traffic patterns at the secondary schools that they're not necessarily used to. One-way hallways and stairways to keep students separated as much as possible, though you're not gonna be able to keep them six feet apart the entire time, the entire day. We know that. Um, uh but you may very well see one-way hallways and ways of, of keeping students separated as much as possible. So that planning has been underway. Dr. McMahon, something to add?
I would also add, Dr. Alato, that uh the students will be in classrooms, you know, 10 to 14 students in a classroom, depending on the size of the classroom, similar to the elementary model. And they will be, the teacher will be teaching, as we discussed in the prior question from Dr. Tobin, they will be teaching simultaneously. Those students at home learning virtually as well as those in front of them. But we do have to also recognize that some of our teachers will have accommodations and they will be teaching from home. So for those students, when they come to second period algebra class and their algebra teacher is teaching from home, there will be another adult in the class live with them to support them, but they will be learning virtual uh virtually from that classroom for that period. So that's the added notion. During the midday time, they have a midday break like our elementary students do, but we will see them eating in the classrooms and also having time for socialization and potentially clubs during that midday break that where they could attend them live. So based on social distance norms, but where they would be able to get together to some degree.
And of course, masking would, is part of that mix as well.
Right. All right. Thank you for that.
Yes, ma'am.
I will see if there are any more um questions. Um, I'll start uh with Ms. Corcadell.
Thank you, President Ellis. Um, I do have one follow-up, um, Dr. Alato. So you know, um, in the private sector, the public sector and everywhere, whether it's small business or large institutions like ourselves, um, everybody's having to find ways of supporting um, the transition of employees back into in-person environments. And depending on their profile, um, I know you guys have been working really hard on making sure that our, all of our employees, not just our teachers and those in the classrooms, but everybody is well-supported. Could you perhaps elaborate on some of the uh resources that are available to our employees and, and the likes? Um, because we talk a lot about the students, but I know that the mental health of my students start with a healthy employee in front of them and around them. So if you wouldn't mind just sharing, because we never seem to have the time, but I do think it's relevant a- as we're approaching and talking about um this transition that is an adjustment for every American in coming, you know, happening in varying ways, shapes and forms. Some of them are food service guys. It was March. Um, and some of them are going to be happening in the coming months.
Yes, yes, ma'am. Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for the question. And it is um, uh, the, the, the well-being of our students, of course, is paramount. And you've heard me say on many occasions, if we, the adults in their lives are not 100%, we can't give 100% to our students. So it is a very important question and, and I'll ask Mrs. Jackson to join us um to see if she's got anything to add to my comments, but um it is important. So we um, uh, it, it really begins with our administrators spending time to check in on their teachers, just like they would walk from classroom to classroom when we're in brick and mortar. They're doing that now in the virtual environment. They're visiting classrooms. They're meeting with teachers. They, we, we created schedules that would allow for meeting time with the administrators and uh their teachers. So that there could be that colleague-to-colleague time to support each other and that administrators could check on their um, to check on their staffs. We have had, we have had some staff members throughout this difficult time since March that have needed additional supports. Um, we have our EAP, which is our Employee Assistance Program, uh has been up and running and certainly has been serving a number of our staff members as they have needed assistance during these difficult times as well. Mrs. Jackson, anything to add?
Yes, sir. Thank you for the opportunity and good evening to everyone. Um, in addition to EAP, uh, the Wednesday, this, as I've stated on several occasions, as well as Dr. McMahon and Dr. Alato, we purposely put the schedule in place, um utilizing all of the things that we know, not only about educational science, but behavioral science as well. And part of that is not only the opportunity for our students to collaborate and interact during the day and on, especially on Wednesdays, but for our teachers and staff members. Because we must remember, and it's been quite apparent over the last few weeks, that COVID has not occurred in isolation. Um, over the past year, there's been a lot going on. And so we offer the opportunity through book studies and other professional development. We offer the opportunity for our teachers to collaborate with staff because they too um want the opportunity to discuss um and to continue to learn. And so I would say, in addition to EAP and the wonderful services of our human relate, um, our Human Resources Committee, um, our Human Resource Specialists, excuse me, um the Wednesdays and other opportunities for professional development and collaboration built into the schedule um also offer those opportunities for teachers and other staff members as important.
Thank you. As a follow-up question, uh, do you have any plans to address specifically transition from, you know, from, from, from that? Um, I know that there, they're starting to emerge some um educational, professional development, execu- you know, opportunities to uh kinda target that as we start to do that is i- it's sounding like, but I don't wanna presume, I just kinda, but I, it, that we're gonna have that, y- you know, a little bit more maybe for, for, to address that particular topic or um
Yes, ma'am.
No, no, that was.
No, sir, I
No, we, go, go, go ahead, Mrs. Jackson. Go ahead, and then I'll, I'd come in.
I know, it was an awkward question. Sorry.
No, ma'am. We, we certainly, we certainly are. And again, as with uh with our students, as we get into the moment and we feel that we need to make adjustments, um we will certainly do so using our research-based approach. Um, as well as uh the quantitative and qualitative data that we have on a day-to-day basis. Our teachers will tell us and our staff members will tell us how they feel and what they need. Um, and we will continue to utilize that data to help drive our decisions.
Well, I saw the fine work done when we transitioned over the summer into virtual, which um although the, the terminology and I think some of the words being used, the uh trepidation, concerns and in some cases even fear uh rela- resulting in anxiety, um where you well-supported that when we transitioned to virtual. And I just said, I, I just wanna make sure that, y- you know, everybody's still on the same page, that we continue to do that. And also just to find out where we are, because we are with this inevitable timeframe that we haven't seen yet to date um in this uh crisis. So thank you so very much.
Mr. Smith?
Hey, President. Um, Ellis, our first question is uh back to the vaccines. Dr. Alato, can you share with us maybe what Dr. Kalyana Ramen shared with you as to why the vaccine, why we can return after only one dose of the vaccine as opposed to waiting for both doses to be delivered? Did you give me statistics on the, on the success rate after one dose or anything like that?
I, I don't, I don't have any of that. Um, I, I don't have any of that data. Um, uh, there is a, I mean, I've read, what you probably have read. And so this is, this is nothing more than that, that there is um that after a few days, I think I, I, I think I read at one point, after 10 days after the administration of the first vaccine, there's a pretty high efficacy of the vaccine. And then, of course, when either 21 days later, 28 days later, depending on the vaccine, when you get that second dose and that completes the full efficacy of the um, uh, of the vaccine. But I think it's after 10 days after the first dose. But I think our plan would be, let's say those folks that are vaccinated in the first week of February would have gotten their second dose within 21 to 28 days. So they would have already had two doses before the first week of March, when we would begin to bring students back. Use it, and then that just rolls from one week to the next, based on our tiered system and the availability of the vaccines.
Okay. And then my next question is about the high school return. I'm thinking about the transition part. You know, I was always curious about what that would look like, not the transition, but high school schedule. I know a student goes to meet high school, a lot of students, small hallways. You know, I have the scuff marks on the back of my shoe to prove that it gets really tight. And so I, just a few questions. One, will there be hall monitors to make sure that, or will the teacher stand at their classroom to make sure, one, the students are following the pathways that are laid down, right? The one-way hallways, they're making sure their masks are on, they're making sure they're not touching making sure they're not walking, you know, two by two in single file lines, because I'm just thinking about, you know, way a year ago, almost, to my experiences in, in high school. It's tight. Um, people don't like always following rules. Um, you need those hall monitors. I mean, we have people just congregating in the middle of the hallway because you haven't seen somebody since last period. Imagine having seen somebody in a year, right? Think how long that conversation can be. Now, I mean, that, that, those are all real concerns to me because yes, s- I mean, some teachers will be vaccinated, right? We can't guarantee that all of them will be vaccinated. But two, no students. Students, some students might be, but not all students do that. And we're, we're not out the woods yet. Especially the students, because it, it can still affect us and some people have, um, you know, older folks at their home or their parents. And I know you're saying, well, you know, you would just opt out of virtual learning. I mean, you'd opt out of in-person learning. Well, some students don't have that option. Right? I mean, they would jump at the chance to get back in the building, but they wanna do it in a safe manner. So I mean, can you elaborate more on the transition period in high school? Because I'm just a little concerned about that.
Yes, that, thank you, Mr. Smith. Um, all good questions and all concerns for us as well. There are no guarantees um that students won't walk to a breath down the hallway, that they won't file in single file line, that they won't take their masks off. Um, we will absolutely have uh the staffs, the principals have already been working on plans about, and organizing with their staffs about how they will maintain their buildings and at, and in particular, those transitions. Because you said those are important. It's one thing when you're sitting in a classroom and you're spaced out four, five or six feet apart and you just wipe down your desktop and you just use hand sanitizer, but when you're traveling from one class to the next, um, that is where the greater risk is um of transmission and you, of the virus, and you're, you're 100% correct on that. So we will, we'll have um folks out in the hallways, we'll have adults out in the hallways, monitoring the students, reminding them. Um, but we're also a- asking that when students and parents make the decision to return to in-person learning, that they are willing to follow the rules of that school. Because it's not only for their safety, but it's for the sa- health and safety of their classmates and their families and their classmates' families. So if those students and those families are not willing to follow those rules, then I would encourage them to remain virtual. But we will do all, we will certainly do our best or level best um to enforce the rules that we've set in place with distancing um uh hallway management and traffic flow throughout the school, masking and the like.
Okay. It's just, you know, because we, we're all well aware of, you know, to make this plan work, everything really has to work flawlessly, right? Because if there's one exposure, it shut down the whole school for two weeks and we're back in this situation. And I would just really, I mean, I guess my next question is about uh, students and parents making that decision. Is there like a contract that we'll sign, right? So we can say, hey, you signed this contract. Now you're breaking it. Now we can put you back in the hybrid model. I mean, have we thought for those that, you know, either, either, you know, um I, I have we thought of consequences for the, consequences for those students that are just not following the, the guidelines just because?
So I, I, I'd rather not think in terms of consequences. I'd rather think in terms of bringing students back into buildings uh that want to be there and, and want to follow uh the rules that we've established for their own health and safety. But that said, yes, this is in essence a contract, so it is a registration form. We're asking the parents to complete. Uh, and it does, there is a, a space on that registration form where students have to, where the parents have to check that they know and understand um that there are rules in place and what the rules are and that they have to be followed. But there will be, yes, there will be consequences like there are uh if students break other rules within the school. But, but I really want to, and I know, I know your point is because you want also for students to follow the rules and staff to follow the rules so that we don't have to close buildings, right? We don't wanna just open. We wanna open and stay open. We don't wanna open and close and open and close. And so we're all gonna have to work together and, and follow the rules. And I have I've got great confidence in our students and our staff that they will, that, that they will follow the rules.
You know, I appreciate the response. You're right. You know, I don't not want to open up and close, because we could open up tomorrow, right? Then we close back down on Tuesday. Then we close back down on Tuesday, because the case would be too hot. But it's just that, you know, like I said, every piece has to be in place and has to work flawlessly. And I've seen time and time again where this, no one's fault, I'm not trying to blame anybody, but things just fall apart, right? You try something, then it may is too hard to enforce, so you say, okay, you know, we tried, we cannot do that. So, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm pleased to hear that you will be, I guess, saying that fact to, to the faculty and staff and to the students, just so they all know just the gravity of the situation, because I'm sure we've all seen that when you open something up, that seems like when the cases start to rise. Case in point, when we opened back up, what, in June, then we had that huge rise going into the fall. So, who's to say that when we open up the schools, we won't see a large increase in cases, because they say, well, the schools open, that's the biggest part of our life. I guess we can go back to normal, go back to hanging out with no mask, no social distancing, no hand sanitizer. But I'm glad that we're, you know, starting to think about these tough questions. I know you've probably been thinking about them for a while. But, you know, I guess I'll just use this time to say, like I've been saying for months now, students, we have to continue to wear our masks and, you know, social distance and hand sanitizer. I know it's very exciting to, you know, hang out with your friends, go to the mall, go to a New Year's Eve party. But since you went to that New Year's Eve party, now you're costing us a chance to like a graduation or a prom. I was very disappointed looking on Instagram, January 1st, seeing a lot of pictures of New Year's Eve parties. And, you know, we just really have to say time and time again, just because a vaccine is out, just because we're looking at opening schools does not mean we're out of harm's way. I mean, this, and plus, it's also novel coronavirus. That's the one thing people have stopped saying. This is a novel virus. We don't know the side effects down the road, you know, chickenpox, shingles. I don't know who has shingles. My dad had it. Does not look fun. I hope there's not a shingles from coronavirus. So, I mean, that's way above our pay grade, but still, I'm just gonna, you know, I just said my piece, continue to, you know, be vigilant, right? I mean, we're, we're at war here. We can't give up just because we won one battle. So, that's all I'm going to say. And Dr. Arlato, thank, thank you for answering my questions.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Ms. Antoine?
Thank you, President Ellis. Dr. Arlato, so I want to shift from our health perspective to our safety and security perspective. We have Chief Awad as our new Chief of Police. Have you been in touch with her? And will we have SROs on board when we return to schools?
So, no, she and I, the new police chief and I have not had yet a, a chance to meet, but we will. And yes, when the secondary schools open, we'll have access to our SROs. They're currently redeployed by the police chief, but when we, when we open the secondary schools, of course, there are no SROs at the elementary schools. When we open the secondary schools, my conversations with the previous chief, the acting chief, was that the SROs would then be made available and, and placed and, and assigned back to their schools.
Understood. I know a lot has been going on, but I, I truly believe it would be great for us to hear her agenda, her plans and otherwise. And I'm, I'm speaking to the board, actually, that we get in touch with Chief Awad and, and, and share with her how we plan to do and, and how she plans to work with us when, when we do reopen, if we reopen. And then my, my second question is, based on Governor Hogan's report today, the access to the vaccines will be subject to, can, he's allowing each county, each local area to determine how that rolls out. If I am a teacher who kind of wants to go ahead and get mine now and run over to Giant or Walmart, I think is where he said they will be available, would some of, would the employees be allowed to go outside of the county? And, and because at state level, I think the one B phase starts on Monday. So, would they be allowed to go elsewhere to get vaccinated if they're told for whatever reason that they have to wait within and around the town?
They do not have to wait for us. A, a, any employee, if they can get access to a vaccine, they should, and they want the vaccine, they should go forward. They should not wait for us. If they can get access to a vaccine, that would be, that would be great.
Excellent. You make that easy. And then finally, I heard about touring of the schools. I, as a board member, love to tour some of the schools, perhaps before, and if it can't happen before on a German school day. And so, I, I will be looking forward to working with you so that we could visit schools during this, this return. Finally, metrics are going to be important if we choose to reopen. Would there be area for, for gathering metrics on some of what I am kind of positive? When we return, we didn't anticipate, we could capture that, other things, other entities that may be working for us? Metrics that would shape how we move into the 2021, 2022 school year? Are, are there, are there plans to capture such metrics?
Um, but could you be a little more specific? I'm not sure which, could you give me some examples? Because I'm not sure exactly what you're referring to, Ms. Antoine.
Sure, I, if I go back to say the, let's go back to candy and the mask. And, and we planned well for it, but maybe 2,000 masks on hand with two, 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 not enough masks. So, then we, therefore, we plan for coming school year with budget for 4,000 rather than 2,000. So, is there a place where those, those types of metrics will be captured? I'm also very concerned about the return of schools with students and how they socialize. And some of the dudes and don't there, they will be socializing differently than they did before because of all the exposure they had in the last year. So, just capturing those types of metrics so that we can build a plan that's, that's more sustainable when we move into our next school year.
So, if I understand the question, I, I, I believe the answer is yes. We, as we do even when we're in brick and mortar, we, as you well know, we have several mechanisms by which we meet with the principals, both at the cluster level and at the build, at the at the level, elementary, middle or high school. Those meetings happen monthly. So, that's where much of that is discussed and captured, where we can talk to the principals and talk about, to use your example, the use of masks. You were given X number of masks, how many have you used in a week, in a month, in the year? So that it can help us plan for the future. So, yeah, those, we have a, we have a mechanism in place where we're able to meet with the principals. And of course, there's the Office of School Performance, where each of the regional assistant superintendents and the directors that are assigned to those clusters are in touch on a daily basis with their principals. So, that's where they would be able to, to have those conversations and collect that information.
Excellent. That, that sounds like a plan. Thank you, Dr. Arlato, for, for this information.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Silkworth. Do you have any questions?
The only question that I might mention is that we have received many, many, many emails from many people, including many, many students. And as a 49-year veteran teacher, I, and as a former senior class sponsor and as a former, or still hopefully an announcer at events such as Homecoming, knowing that these events are so important for our seniors, many of our seniors have voiced the fact that they feel like they, they've, they've lost so much, and of course, they have. And so, if we are able to, and hopefully we will be able to do so, if we are able to bring our kids back face to face, I just wanted to make sure that they understood that we will do our very best to, to try to make sure that events such as graduations and, and proms could occur in, given that, that circumstances based on COVID are, are okay.
Yes, sir. I am very well aware of the importance of, of all of those important life events that our seniors go through. Those seniors are in my thoughts every day and, and have been since the beginning of this. The class of 2020 and now the class of 2021. They are very much in my thoughts. So, as we go through this process, they're at the top of the list. I don't know that I can guarantee that we're going to have senior proms and graduations as we have had them in the past. But I am bound and determined, as is my staff, to, to give those seniors, those life events as close to normal as possible. But I can't predict what May and June are going to look like. But I'm, I'm more encouraged today on that front than I was two weeks ago.
Thank you. So am I. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Frank?
Hi, yes. I don't have any other questions, just definitely thank you again for that. I did want to echo two sentiments. One, Ms. Antoine mentioned going into the building. I absolutely, if, if we start getting up to that point again, I, I, I definitely look forward to getting into the building and seeing this hybrid firsthand, and I would love to to see how you guys, you know, are, are getting everything done and just be part of that, too. And then, again, with Mr. Silkworth's comment about the seniors, I've gotten a lot of emails as well. And I, I know that you're, you're aware of it, but yeah, just add my voice that if we can get as much as we can for these guys, I really just, you know, want to keep that in mind, too. Thank you.
Y, y, yes, ma'am. Thanks for your comments. And I would, what I would add, and I didn't in, in my, in my response to Mr. Silkworth is we too, as I said, we are, we want these, these important life events to happen for our seniors. We have already booked Maryland Live for graduations. That has been done. We've got our date set. And so, fingers crossed and vaccines in arms, we're going to be able to have our graduations. But we've, we are, the point being, Ms. Frank, that we are planning that far in advance and that we've booked the dates of Maryland Live is anxious to work with us and host our graduation, just like they were last year, and even more so this year.
Yep, I'm very excited. Thank you.
Ms. Shawheim?
Yes, I want to echo the sentiments of my, the two previous colleagues, Mr. Silkworth and Ms. Frank. I want to also see the hybrid model firsthand and yeah, absolutely, 1,000%. I, I have a lot of questions, as many as I can. So, if we are looking at March, the beginning of March for a portion of, of students and by the end of March, opening in, in full, what is the, the date of the return of teachers at this point, ideally for you?
Ideally, at, at the very least, based on the direction this board has given me thus far, would be two weeks prior to the return of students.
Okay, so just like.
So, I, so I don't have a date in hand, because I don't, I, I don't know what the ultimate decision this board will be, but I'm working backwards. And so, it will be somewhere around two weeks, because if you, if you'll remember, this board passed a motion to strongly encourage this superintendent to not return teachers back to buildings pri, uh, prior to two weeks, no sooner than two weeks prior to the return of the students.
Okay, thank you. I have, again, I want to reiterate the importance of testing. Like, we cannot just do vaccines. Remember, vaccines are not indicated for anyone under the age of 16 so far. And so, I mean, just, just do some math here. We have 84,000 kids, we have 6,000, 7,000, I don't know, teachers. It's still going to be a huge risk. I know kids don't get as sick, y'all. I've, I've read the same things y'all have, and maybe they don't transmit it as much, but with these variants out there, Lord knows, and I, we need to have some sort of testing plan. So, again, I, I want that to be another focus of this. Can you speak to? Well, there's a couple of things. I'm just going to ask both. Can you speak to what a daily health check looks like from the, from the aspect of our schools? I know we're asking parents to do a symptom check every day. Let's get real. I, I'm not sure that's going to be 100% complied with. So, when they get off the bus or get out of the car or walk up to the school building, what does it look like? Are we, are we queering kids as they go in? Is there anything around that that you can speak to?
N, n, no, ma'am.
Okay. Because that was quick, I'm going to ask a couple more. MSDE currently mandates that we have an average of three and a half hours of synchronous instruction a day. To me, this hamstrings us so much in so many ways. Let's talk about elementary. I, I still have a little bit of, a lot of bit of worry about, you know, half the students at home following along, trying to follow along with the teacher with the mask on in a classroom, who's also trying to engage with, you know, youngsters in a classroom. I know our teachers are saints, we all know they're angels. I still think this is a very, that's a big ask, that's a hard ask, and it's hard on our teachers and our students. Do we have any more information about getting out of that mandate? I know that you and your 24, 23 other colleagues have been asking, I, I, we need an update on this, because if we didn't have to do that, gosh, it would make our lives just a little bit, lot a bit easier, I think. And that would allow us to change some major parts of the plan if you so chose to do, and I hope that you would.
Oh, no, there's no change. I'm sure those conversations will continue, but there's no, there's no change from MSDE that I'm aware of. And those school systems that are, the few that are operating a hybrid environment now in the state of Maryland are following that three and a half hour rule, as far as I know.
That's mind-numbing to me. I just ask us to ask again. I don't, maybe, maybe they're so far removed, haven't been in a classroom in a while, or don't understand how this is going to work. But I think that's a duly difficult on all of us. And particularly our very young kids, and particularly our elementary school teachers. I think when you get to the high school level, when you're close to college, it probably makes a lot more sense to have, you know, I think it would be a lot more reasonable of an ask, because you have kids that are, you know, that can withstand, could be accommodating to that sort of instruction. I still have, have a lot of concerns. So, hey, if any of the state board members are watching out there, do us a solid and let's change that mandate, please. Oh, last question, and then I'll turf it over. Sorry, I am taking a little bit of time. Cultural arts instruction, you know, media, art, music, PE at the elementary level in particular, are those teachers staying virtual? Is it going to be, as Dr. McMahon alluded to, where you might have an adult in the room and the instructor teaching virtually? Because wouldn't it be like a mini super spreader event? Because that, that cultural arts teacher is teaching every class in the school and potentially kids at other schools. So, how, how are we handling cultural arts instruction once we get back into buildings on a hybrid model?
Yeah, let me, let me address, first, I'll, I'll ask Dr. McMahon to talk about the cultural arts, but I'm, I'm a little concerned about your use of a super spreader event in a school. I don't think that if, if everybody is wearing masks and we are using the hand sanitizer and wipes and we are staying as socially distant as possible, then that does not, that's not part of the equation of a super spreader event. Even if a teacher is coming and going from multiple classrooms, if the teacher and the students are wearing their masks, we're following all the other health and safety guidance that we've been given thus far, then I don't believe we would have anything close to a super spreader event. Dr. McMahon, you want to share about the cultural arts and how that will look at the elementaries?
Thank you, Dr. Arlato. Yes, Mrs. Shawheim, it's a good question. And with respect to cultural arts, yes, they will stay virtual. And that's for many reasons. One, many of our cultural arts teachers are split between schools. And so, windshield time, we call that windshield time when they're driving between schools. That doesn't allow them that they need in order to support the students in this virtual and hybrid environment. And also, with respect to chorus and, and band and the wind instruments, et cetera, we haven't been given the go-forward to have live instruction with in-person students for those students. So, yes, it will remain virtual so that the cultural arts teachers can So yes, it will remain virtual so that the cultural arts teachers can teach the hybrid in-person learners and the virtual learners simultaneously.
Okay, just a little follow-up comment on that. A, I think we're all looking for a little levity, so, you know, you took my comment a little too seriously, Dr. Lotto. I didn't mean it literally, that it would be a literal super spreader event. I'm just thinking about the teacher marching to each classroom in the school and the optics and the trying to limit contacts and that kind of thing. So thank you, Dr. McMahon, for that explanation. I want to touch on one little thing and then I'll let y'all go, at least on this round. You said we haven't been given permission to do band in person. So are we canceling band for the rest of the year if we go back? Or will that remain virtual? I want that offering to exist throughout, so hopefully it will.
We've had a lot of good success with the virtual lessons.
Yes, we have.
Small groups, and that, of course, will extend throughout the year. At this moment in time, the notion of bringing three and four students together from various classrooms to play their clarinets, you know, with the wind instruments together, that's not something we can do at this time.
I just wonder about the scheduling challenge because I'm just going to use an example. Intermediate trumpet and saxophone is, you know, or just trumpet, I think, is Tuesdays at 12:45 at my daughter's school. So if some of those kids are in school that day live and half of those kids are at home, how does that mess with the schedule? Acknowledging that that teacher probably has a great number of classes to teach in music.
It is, and we are going to have to align the music, especially the chorus and band, with the virtual, the students when they are virtual. And so it will mean changing of current times of music may change because of that with respect to instrumental and choral music.
Great. Thank you, President Ellis. I will likely have additional questions. Thank you.
I just have, is it two? Well, one quick question, Dr. Lotto, you said you would like to get teachers back. Am I, you would like to get teachers back to their classrooms two weeks prior to students returning, correct?
Yes.
Right. And so let's say if we had another week, for cases to come down more, would that prevent, would that move our opening target in your mind? Or is it doable in one week if you had to have that?
If, I'm sorry, I don't understand the question. If I had to have what?
If you, if, let's say, one week from, or two weeks before March 1st, we still don't have enough vaccines administered. But one week before you would, would one week, would you be able to get it done in one week if you had to under those circumstances?
In terms of returning teachers, it's not about getting it done because the teachers can transition from their homes and where they're teaching now into their buildings. We would want to create some time for them to do that. So could we do it in a week? Absolutely. I think two weeks is more ideal, at the very least, if not more, for the teachers to be teaching virtually from their classrooms, for them to, as Dr. Tobin was referring to, sort of working out the kinks, getting used to the technology in the room and getting ready for physically having students in the building. But to answer your question, if the timing were such that we couldn't bring teachers back in two weeks prior to the students returning and we could do it in a week, sure.
Okay. And then one more question. Normally, our freshmen and our sixth graders start a day before the rest of the students in their school. But I personally, I would hate to keep those other secondary students out a day longer than we had to. Could you envision the possibility of maybe an orientation type of day happening before the school's fully open, just for those students?
So I don't know that we would take a full day, an orientation day. I believe the middle school, the middle school principals have been talking and maybe Mrs. Jackson can correct me if I'm wrong, have been talking about that transition when the students do return to their buildings. And in particular, those sixth graders as they are, this will be their first time in that building, as well as the high school principals and ninth graders being new to their building. Anything to add to that, Mrs. Jackson?
Yes, sir. And President Ellis, we, within that first day, as students are transitioning within their cohorts, there could be planned activities for team building, things of that nature. So we would replicate those things that you would see on the first day of school. You just, it would just be with their peers in different grade levels.
All right, thank you. So we have gone through two rounds of questions. I would like to remind.
President Ellis, I'm sorry, you forgot me.
I am so sorry. I jumped in front of you. So Dr. Tobin is going to ask her questions. I am so sorry. And then I just want to remind all board members that, you know, a lot of people are watching and wanting to know what's going to happen. So if we could try really hard to keep our questions to those things that are going to help form the decisions tonight, that would be great. Go ahead, Dr. Tobin. My apologies again.
Sure, thank you. So, yeah, a couple of areas of questions I have. One, sort of broadly around all the pieces of the puzzle with regard to staff. So obviously, there has to be a question, you know, if a teacher has to be quarantined, what do we have substitutes, are substitutes in line for getting their vaccinations? If so, in what order are they prioritized? Sort of on the same order as the kind of levels of teachers that are coming back? In other words, are special ed substitutes in line along with special ed teachers and so forth? And then in the building, obviously, we've got these midday breaks. Who's, you know, how's the coverage planned for that in the classroom? And presumably, if I'm understanding what I've seen, students are eating in the classroom, which means they're taking their masks off. You know, what, kind of how are we, how have you thought about all those backup questions with regard to staff of making sure that everybody knows, A, if they're going to be asked to cover for a midday block or something like that? But also, what kind of substitute situation do we have? And how are we going to accommodate just the possibility that unfortunately, we may still have teachers having to be out, even when they thought they could be back in for whatever the reason?
Sure. So there are a number of pieces there to that question. So regarding substitutes, so yes, we have substitutes. We don't have enough substitutes. We don't have enough substitutes when we're in brick and mortar and all is well. So we have a reduced number of substitutes, but we do have substitutes. And yes, we'll need to get our substitutes vaccinated. We'll start with our long-term substitutes. Those are our salaried long-term substitutes and then our day-to-day subs. But we'll plan to get them vaccinated also because they will be called upon to work in schools with students. Principals will work that out to the best of their ability, as they would in brick and mortar, to cover a class and then call in a substitute as needed. Regarding the midday break, that midday block of time, that is time built in for the students to eat lunch, as well as for teachers to have some of their contracted lunch and planning time. And so we'll have to have adults covering the classroom with students eating. Yes, they'll have to take off their masks to eat. We'll ask them to stay as distant as possible while they're eating their lunches in their space and then clean up after themselves and dispose of their trash and get ready for the remainder of their day. We are in the process of hiring, hiring assistants that can work with us during the midday break in the elementary classrooms to help cover that, to help cover that time. And so they will, we were able to secure as part of our CARES money and set aside some monies for this very use, knowing that we would have this midday time at some point when we did return to a hybrid model, that we would need these folks. And so we're in the process of advertising and hiring. Those folks will also be vaccinated because they will be with the students during that midday break. And Dr. Tobin, I think you're muted.
My first time today. I went later than you did.
You did indeed.
The other question I have is, so if we're looking at the beginning of March, if I'm correct, and this has to do with sort of grading and record keeping, that will happen in the middle of a marking period. Are there any implications for PowerPoint or anything with regard to the shift into hybrid? Or will that be seamless for teachers? Will they, you know, will that not change their, what they have to do to keep records and grading and so forth?
Yeah, so good question. If I'm not mistaken, and I'll ask either Dr. McMahon or Mrs. Jackson to join us just to make sure that I am not giving you inaccurate information. I think the change of marking period is in April. I don't believe it's in March. We change to the next from third marking period to fourth marking period in April.
That's correct. No, I do understand that, but we would be going into hybrid in the middle, in, you know, not at a break, but in the middle of a marking period essentially. So I didn't know if it would have any impact.
No, I don't believe that, I mean, other than, of course, the physical transition that our teachers and our students will go through. But no, I don't believe it will impact, it will impact that. I guess grading is what you're referring to. And the changeover, it should not impact that. Dr. McMahon, is that accurate?
That is correct, Dr. Lotto. Okay. And oh, just to follow up on the cultural arts teacher question. So if the cultural arts teachers are necessarily going to stay virtual, I would assume they don't need to ever come back into the building. Is that correct? Well, many of them will come back into the building because their environment to teach from is just so much richer than it is at home. They have all their instruments or all their art supplies and the physical. It sounds like it would depend on their particular needs as far as teaching goes, rather than a blanket requirement? They are part of the whole staff of those schools. And so team-wise, they're part of the collaborative learning staff, I mean, the collaborative planning staff, et cetera. If they were home and everybody else was at school, you'd be a bit disadvantaged. Okay. All right, I think that's it for now. Thank you.
First visually. All right, so I'm going to go time and then I'll ask one more time and see if we can move on. Go ahead, Ms. Shawheim.
Thank you. I will always have more questions than the rest. That's just who I am. That's just the person I am. I want to talk a little bit about special ed and Pola. In the virtual world, so far, this has been swimmingly, what I can gather from my daughter's classes. The instructor comes on, the kids' names are called, they go to a separate room for their, virtual room for their services. How will this be handled in the hybrid world so that we can make sure that everyone's IEP is followed to the letter?
Dr. McMahon?
So, Mrs. Shawheim, you're correct. It is handled pretty seamlessly in the virtual world. And we hope that that will continue into the hybrid world. In some cases, the student that is an in-person learner will be afforded the opportunity one-on-one with the service provider. But in some cases, they will not, just simply because of the scheduling. These service providers often provide services for one, two, three, four schools, depending on the service provider. And so these schedules are like a puzzle piece. And so what we'll do is we'll do our very best to give in-person opportunity to students when they are in person. But if we can't, those services will remain virtual.
Okay, great. And then my last follow-up is again about cultural arts because I'm thinking about this and I still don't know how it's going to work. If I'm an eight-day student and my cultural, my band is on a Tuesday and remains on a Tuesday, I'm in person. Am I schlepping my instrument from home to play it virtually in person? How are you going to do that when half of your students are out the building and half are in? And also with regard to what Dr. Tobin was saying, and having them come back to their, to their teaching environments, how does that work if they, if they're roaming between, if in pre-COVID times, they roam between schools? Do they have an office or a classroom that is theirs to even go to?
Well, they do have an office and/or a classroom at every one of the schools to which they are assigned. That is true. But we will attempt to build schedules together with the music teacher and their principal that meets the needs of the students in that building and the associate at a building where they're also assigned. And so it will mean that some students that were all together in the virtual world on the Tuesday, now it may mean that they're now a split group between Tuesday and Thursday. So I'll give you an example. For example, instead of having flutes by themselves, it might end up being flutes and clarinets so that there's a flute and clarinet group on Tuesday and a flute and clarinet group of the remaining students on Thursday. And that may have to happen just simply so that all students get their musical instructional time with that teacher virtually.
Great. So it wouldn't be a situation at all where kids have to bring their instruments to school because if we haven't been given permission to do that, it would all be when they are, they're off days, as it were.
You are correct.
Great. All right. Thank you, President Ellis. Appreciate it.
Mr. Smith?
Just one quick question. When we start sports, will coaches or any other coaching staff have the opportunity to get vaccinated with a CPS staff or will they be on their own?
No, we plan to offer them vaccinations also. I met with Mr. Clayton Culp, who oversees our athletics earlier today, along with Mrs. Jackson and Dr. Lucarelli to talk about athletics in particular. And our plan is, as we are, as I mentioned several hours ago, we're building a priority list and coaches would be part of that list. We would invite them to be vaccinated with our staffs.
This is exciting news. Then just, I guess, two follow-ups on that. Any parent volunteers that we solicit, will they be able to, like, volunteers that will come in? Will they be able to get vaccinated or?
Parent volunteers in what sense?
For the elementary, the lunch hour monitors?
So we're hoping first to hire those folks. But if we do have volunteers, then they would have to be vaccinated also, yes. Anybody that's going to possibly come in contact with students in the school will need to be vaccinated.
Okay, that's great. Good news. And lastly.
Well, I should say, let me correct that. We'll have the option to be vaccinated.
Okay. Like I said, exciting news. And lastly, have you been in contact with the MPSSAA? Will, you know, if they're going to coach referees or umpires, you know, when competition starts?
Going to coach them? What do you mean?
When competition starts for sports, we'll have competition, not just practices. You know, if coaches and referees will be vaccinated, since they will have contact.
Yeah, so coaches, so our coaches, yes. Regarding referees, I don't have, I have no idea. Um, uh, um, if the Coaches Association will manage that or the MPSSAA will manage that, I just, I I don't know.
Thank you, President Ellis, for allowing me to ask the last two questions. I think everybody can appreciate a sports question.
Okay, I think we've completed uh the questions. Um, I do have a board member who requested to make a brief statement, so I do want, um, I know how. Um. The the public has heard how many emails, um, public testimony emails the board has received. That's that's the official. Um, but we've been getting emails for a very long time now. Um, many, many of them were very engaged with our communities. So I do want to offer everyone um a brief moment to make a brief statement, um, if you wish to do so. Um, and then we will move on to any motions that will be introduced. Um, so, uh, Ms. Quirkadel.
Thank you, President Ellis. Um, greatly appreciated. This is um. This has been quite a uh struggle for everybody, clearly. Um. As I've been working through it myself personally, obtaining information, reviewing the studies. Um, to substantiate all the things, um, meeting with staff, our board meetings and a variety at the state level. Um, clearly, everybody has the well-intent and the priority of education services. Uh, being our priority um in the forefront each and every single day. And personally, I don't know of a human being who could not feel affected. Um, have moments of fear, have moments of doubt in our decisions, and we're in uncharted territory. But I have and remain very hopeful, not just because of the new information, but in part to our leaders. It's a little-known fact that um our Board of Education is ultimately responsible to the State Board of Education. All of our authority, all of our power, and what we're allowed to do and what we're not allowed to do starts there. And it's in that leadership that I think it's important that we always look to. These are the ones who are crunching the numbers. They are the experts, um, and there is no dispute about it. And so as we've been working through this at a personal level, as a group level, as a board, as a school system at AACPS. Into a much broader, but I think very relevant extension of the county and the others. I think it's important to re-baseline and re-remember and remember once again, be remembered again, I should say. Of the words of our state superintendent, Dr. Salmon. And I wanted to share, I didn't want to just do a direct quote of hers, but I thought it was a very appropriate uh press release. That occurred after the October meeting, and this is um quoting, taking quotes from Dr. Salmon's. Um, memo to the State Board of Education. And um they chose, they thought it was significant enough. That they chose to make it as part of the preamble for the reopening plan when they did the update. I believe that was finalized and adopted in November. And so I just want to share with the public. Um, general, you know, refresher for our members who I'm sure have already read all of the data for coming in from, you know. And attend all the meetings virtually, that we've had that opportunity to do so with our our state board, our bosses, as it were. They are our bosses truly, um, with Dr. Salmon. So thank you so much for the indulgence, Madam President. And so I'm just going to, I I'm not gonna say anything in conclusion, but I do want to read directly from that release. That the State Board of Education made back in October. And they're starting off with a quote from the state superintendent. Um, in her words. "It has been said that true leaders act during chaotic times, and it is our responsibility as educators to take action now. That will return students to in-person instruction. The stakes could not be higher," said State Superintendent Karen B. Salmon, Ph.D. "Remote learning cannot replace students' experiences with their teachers, administrators, and support staff." "One might make the argument that any risk is too great and that schools must be completely safe before school, local school systems move towards any in-person instruction." "But this approach disregards the enormous costs to children from keeping school buildings closed." "An estimate from McKinsey &amp; Company suggests that if schools don't return to in-person schooling until January 2021." And this is a publicly published document that anybody could Google. M.C.K.I.N.S.Y. and Company, by the way. Um, let me return to the quote. Um, "Students could lose between three and 11 months of learning, depending on the quality of the remote learning." According to a recent study published in JAMA Pediatrics, "School closures may be especially disruptive for children from lower-income families. Who are disproportionately likely to receive mental health services exclusively from their schools." Locally, the Baltimore Child Abuse Center stated, "Reports of abuse plummeted by more than 70% during the early weeks for the pandemic. With vulnerable people further compromised by this lack of contact and access to teachers, coaches, coworkers, neighbors, and family members." "Students with disabilities benefit the most from face-to-face experiences. And require extensive, intensive, and individualized instruction and supports to narrow their achievement gaps." "Maryland local school systems and public agencies serve approximately 160,000 infants, toddlers, young children, and students with disabilities all across the state annually." And in quote, in parentheses, "Just over 12% of the school-age population." End quote, end parentheses, "With special education and related services tailored to their individual needs." Superintendent Dr. Salmon continued, "We must all unite in our efforts to maintain equitable learning opportunities. And safely return students to their schools. Rather than focusing on obstacles that impede the goal, we must focus on solutions that will overcome them." I think that's probably the most impactful for me. "Instead of focusing on the obstacles that impede this goal, we must focus on solutions that will overcome them." "The necessity health guidance is available to local school systems, and MSD stands ready to work together. Through continued partnership and collaboration, and I'll just end on a note that they have done so. And continue to do so with Dr. Alato and our staff and our health officer in his connections with Dr. Chan and his conversations. It do occur at the state level with Dr. Salmon and the school board. Thank you, Madam President, for this privilege."
Thank you. And once again, I'll um. Offer for anyone who would like to make a brief statement, just please remember to keep it brief. Thank you, um, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, President Ellis. I would just say. To everyone watching tonight, to everyone who's gonna watch. Who's gonna watch this later in time, who's gonna read, you know, the newspaper about this meeting, no matter what we decide tonight, do not think. That we're acting arbitrarily or preciously. You read through all your emails, hundreds of them, uh, from teachers, staff. And everyone else in between. I have read dozens of like Facebook messages, Instagram messages, Twitter messages. I didn't read them, but I thought about them. You've probably been watching my Facebook this meeting throughout this meeting. Um, I've been doing a lot of thinking. I know all my colleagues have been doing a lot of thinking as well. So no matter how this turns out. I want everyone to. To just know that was in the best interest of our entire school community. Right? That's what we're on this board to do, what we think is best. And I know that no board member in their heart would ever do something that they think would endanger. Somebody else's life because they're a part of our extended family. And. I think that says it all. We are going to do what we think is best for not just the students, not just the staff. But our entire AACPS family, because we are a family. And I just hope that everyone keeps at the forefront when you hear the decision, whatever it may be. So thank you, President Ellis.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Ms. Antoine? I'm I'm for board members. I I'm just going around. You don't need to raise your hand. You can choose to speak or not. Thank you.
Thank you, President Ellis. I don't know why why it looks like my hand is up, but I I would like to say to everyone, this is not an easy decision. But it is based on expert advice. It's based on our collaboration as a new board. It's based on the information that has been shared with us from Dr. Alato and. And his experts under his um direction and guidance. It's based on what the students have said, what the community has said. It's based on what the teachers have said, what the unions have said to us. And it's not based on just a few weeks ago. It is it's a culmination of experience and information. The notion that we as a board of education ignores you all, please take that off your plate. This is not the truth. However, education is our forefront, our fore-focus. Our students need to be educated successfully, not just. Giving something and hoping for the best. And I hope that um this board. Um, in fact, I'm praying that this board makes a decision in terms of the best interest of the education of our students. Um, as we move forward, and that's all I have. Thank you, President Ellis.
Thank you, Ms. Schalheim. I mean, Ms. Antoine. I was looking at the wrong page. I said your name. Um, uh, Mr. Silkworth.
Uh, thank you, President Ellis. This board has received hundreds of emails over the past days. And we are listening. We have read heartbreaking stories from so many on both sides of the issue about reopening. I taught in the fall in the virtual world. That was the end of my 49-year teaching career. I know what it's all about. It is challenging for teachers and staff. But I must say that my hat is off to the great teachers in this county who have worked their magic to create rigorous lessons. And my hat is also off as well to our great students who have done their very best under very stressful and difficult circumstances to achieve. Virtual learning is not face-to-face. Some of our students are struggling. Many of our students are thriving. COVID-19 is the problem. I've always said that safety is of utmost importance. Our job as leaders is. To find the best solution for our kids. And I've always said that during my entire career, any decision that I've ever made. Has always been what is in the best interest of our kids. And of course, that does translate to what is in the best interest of our teachers, staff, schools, and communities. The best way to do all of this is to listen and collaborate. And I can guarantee you, ladies and gentlemen, we have done that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Silkworth. Uh, Ms. Frank?
Thank you. Yes, we we have gotten a lot, a lot of emails, and and we read through them very diligently, and. There are so many different stories. There are so such a range of people who say, this is great, this is terrible, and 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 everything in between. And and I think it's very apparent that our job is to get the students back into school as quickly and safely as possible. I think we're all agreed there. It's the details that we're we're just sort of trying to get together and and figure out at this point. So we are trying to be as responsive as possible, and I and I think everybody on this board has done a tremendous job at doing that. And um Dr. Alato's team has been so diligent. To see it behind the scenes is it's just an amazing effort. To get these kids in school as safely and quickly as possible. And at the end of the day, um, with all of these different concerns that that parents and teachers have. What I what I just want to keep coming back to, um, that Dr. Alato mentioned earlier, is the choice. That people have the choice to do what is best in their own unique circumstances, and I hope that we are able to accommodate that tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Frank. Ms. Schalheim?
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, I want to say to to the students out there, the students that have written me, the students that have uh. Made me cry with your with your emails and your stories. Thank you for your advocacy. Um, I serve you, not the other way around. And my decision is based on you. And I hope that we can do this as. Uh, as equitably as possible, so we don't have a situation that I read about in the paper about New York City. And so that um. So that all our kids can get back to need and get some educational recovery. And 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 heal from this. We closed because of the virus. That's why we've remained closed and. And and we're only able to reopen. Uh, if the landscape changes, and I believe that it is. I'm very encouraged by what I hear tonight. Uh, and I just wanted to thank all of the parents and the students that have uh written to us over the last. Ten months, I we've received thousands of emails. I really try my very best to read all of them. I try my very best to acknowledge that I've read all of them. And I I I hear you and I see you, and I say that to our students, and I say that to our parents. And I I know that this board will make a decision. Uh, that that best meets the needs of the students in the system, and I'm very encouraged by the collaboration. And the respect for one another that we have. Uh, and we're all driven and moved by by you, the students. And so that's that's gotta keep our eye on the prize. The prize is our students. And I just thank all of you for reaching out to me. Please continue to do so, as I've stated multiple times, dshawheim@acps.org. 443-534-2660. Use it, share it. I want to hear from you. I work for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Tobin.
Um, thank you. Thank you to everybody who's written us, who's written me. Um, I've, I haven't been able to answer everything, but I've read everything, and I continue to read everything, and I continue to listen. Um, and I continue to try to absorb what I'm told and do, as my colleague said. Uh, my best to to come to decisions that I hope will serve the community best. Um, if we've learned anything over this last almost year, uh, if we didn't know it before, we know it now. When when education's not running, when the schools aren't running, nothing's running. Um, and I hope we don't forget that after we get through this. I hope those who have advocated, the students who have advocated for themselves, the parents, the teachers. Everyone's who, everyone who's been out there advocating keeps being out there advocating. Um, I said earlier, there's no comparison between private and public schools. There are a lot of reasons for that. But not the least of which, and Dr. Kalina Roman mentioned this when he spoke to us last week, is class size. And if you look at the budget that Dr. Arlato has proposed for fiscal year 2222. He has asked for on the order of 129 more teachers in an effort to lower class size. But if you look at that budget, you will also see it would take on the order of 365. New teachers to lower the class size to 26 or less. Most private schools guarantee that there will be no more than 15 students in a class. That's a big difference. And when you're concerned about how difficult it is to move a big public school system like this. Through a pandemic like this, you have to understand those numbers. So I would ask everyone out there. Who's been thinking about all of these questions to remember that. And to remember that we know as a board, our first constituency is our children. They can't vote. But we're here to serve them. And by extension, as Mr. Silkworth said, the teachers, the staff, everyone. Um, and so, education doesn't exist in a vacuum. We've learned that this year. And I hope we remember that, that it is the core of a sustainable community. It is the most important resource we have. And I personally keep that in my mind at all times with all the decisions I make. So, please keep writing me, keep contacting me, keep calling me. I will always answer and I will always listen. So, thank you.
Thank you. I, I want to echo, um, the, the volume of the emails. Um, I, I greatly appreciate. I, we have heard so many different perspectives and opinions based on those perspectives. And, um, and they all matter. They're all important to us. They all teach us something new. Um, so, my apologies. I did not respond to most of them. Um, but just know that, um, this is tough. Everyone, everyone is looking out for your, our students' best interests. Our teachers work round the clock right now. Um, Dr. Arlato and his team and staff throughout the school system work round the clock. I'm working around the clock. I know my fellow board members are. We care. Um, I was able to host a town hall the other day, um, with, with some members of the community. And my faith in our community has been completely renewed because the stories I heard, um, from teachers, from parents, from students, and again, different opinions, very, very different opinions. Some very, very heartfelt pleas from students to get our schools open. I had another student who said, am I going to be able to stay virtual next year when, um, when schools are maybe back to normal? Everyone's experience is different. And so, um, I, we're, we're listening to all of you. Um, but as board members, our responsibility is to listen, to hear all sides, and to do our research, to learn the science as much as we can. Um, and so, having done that, um, we can't open now. A lot of people are saying, why? Why are we making this decision now when the case rate is what it is? We can't open now, but we can plan now. We should not wait for, uh, until we can open and then make plans. So, that's why we're doing this right now. Um, so, I just want to finish by saying, first of all, unfortunately, it is a sad, sad fact that nothing that we do, no decision we make is going to have everyone in agreement. That's, that just simply is a fact. Um, but we are putting the best interest of our students and our staff, the health and safety of everyone is, is, um, is important to all of us. Um, so, just know, we, we're listening, we care, and we're going to come up with the best plan we possibly can for our students. Thank you. And so, with that, um, board members did, uh, submit, um, some prepared motions, and so, um, we're just going to start with the first one. Um, the motion will be put on the table and discussed and voted on, and then we'll move to the next. Um, and so, for the first motion, I would like to call, um, on Mr. Silkworth.
Uh, thank you, President Ellis. Based upon the advice of the superintendent, which includes the metrics and advice from the Anarona County Health Officer and other medical experts, and based upon Anarona County's commitment that our teachers and staff will have the opportunity to be sufficiently vaccinated for COVID- nineteen by the end of February two thousand and twenty-one, I move that Anarona County Public Schools begin to open for in-person instruction for as many students as possible at all grade levels by no later than March first, two thousand and twenty-one. And that, consistent with this, the superintendent and his staff provide the board and the public as soon as practicable, a timeline detailing how the reopening plan will be implemented. That is the motion.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Um, so, we'll allow for board discussion, um, starting with Ms. Corkedell.
Don't have too many comments. I'm just going to say, this is, this is the start point. And this is consistent with our superintendent's recommendation and its spirit and intent, and probably, uh, looks like at least ninety-seven percent of the way there. Uh, sight unseen. So, um, this is how we start, and we start by setting a framework and continuing to, to engage in the dialogue. Thank you very much.
Mr. Smith?
Let's have a question for Mrs. Silkworth. So, with your motion, does, so, your motion, regardless of the metrics, people are going to be back in buildings by March first, correct?
No, that is not correct, because it says, based upon the advice of the superintendent and his collaboration with the health officers and the medical experts. We don't know what's going to be like. Um, we don't, we don't know what it's going to be like. And so, um, uh, if there are some changes in the metrics that really go south, then of course, there's going to be, um, a chance to, uh, reevaluate this. And if this motion passes, my understanding, there will be some other motions, motions that will also address that so that we, we, we can have updates, uh, from our superintendent.
Okay, great. I'm just making, for the public's knowledge, this, you know, we're not just going to, you know, I guess, bull on this blindly and just, um, use where we're at right now to dictate where we're going to go in the future. Because as we've seen in the past, it just can't work with such a polar situation like coronavirus. So, just, if you can just reiterate one more time, this motion will allow us the leeway, I guess, to reevaluate in February, let's say, like, the metrics aren't where they're supposed to be, right? They keep climbing, or, and it's just, you know, even regardless of the vaccine, it just won't be safe. This will allow us to, you know, say, hey, we, we gotta pause, go back to the drawing board and wait just a little longer, right?
Yes, it will.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Silkworth.
Uh, Ms. Antoine?
Thank you, um, President Ellis. And Mr. Silkworth, thank you for this motion. I think it's very detailed. I have some concerns, however, with the timeline, based on what Dr. Arlato did share tonight, that, um, the vaccinations would have taken place by the end of February. We have a two-week window for teachers to return. I guess the question then goes over to Dr. Arlato. Will this March first date work for you in terms of returning the teachers and then getting the students back into places? Is that, is that a good timeframe with the two-week window involved?
Well, the teachers would then have to come back in the middle of February, giving them two weeks prior to that March one deadline, that March one date. The short answer is yes, we can make March first work. All of that is dependent upon, as Mr. Silkworth was just mentioning, the metrics. But it's, it's, i- in terms of the discussion we've had tonight, Mrs. Antoine, uh, it's really dependent on the number of vaccines that have been made available and how many of our staff have been vaccinated by the end of February. But given all of that works, yes, March one will work. We can make it work.
Okay, and then if there are some teachers who have decided, because that, that's only for round one of the two-step vaccination. So, if there, there happen to be some teachers that says, I'm not refusing to get vaccinated, I just want to wait to see the response of others before I take it, but they still want to return to work, will they be allowed to do that?
Yes, ma'am. There is no mandate to be vaccinated for staff to return to work. That is not a condition of employment. It's a choice.
Excellent. Um, uh, well, based on that, my only last question would be, we return, uh, we, we reopen on the first. Based on what I heard from you, there are pockets of populations that will come in first. And then now, uh, and, and then afterwards, we'll, we'll, uh, get the rest of the school, the students into the schools. We're looking from even March first of the end of school year, we're looking at about, uh, definitely under ninety days. So, what would be the timeframe for getting all the students back into building?
The end of March.
Given about fifty days of, of in-person learning, in-building learning, I should say.
Yes, we, we, again, all, if all the timelines are met and the vaccines are available, uh, and we get staff vaccinated, then, uh, I would see us having, um, uh, in the hybrid format, all the grade levels back in by the end of March.
Excellent. Thank you. And thank you again, Mr. Silkworth, for this motion.
Um, Mr. Silkworth, I'll come back to you since you made the motion, in case you have any follow-up after other members have spoken. Um, uh, Ms. Frank?
No comments. Just very excited that we're doing this tonight.
Ms. Shawhan?
Yes, I have a few concerns, so let me just run through them, please. So, it's my understanding that, that if we go with this motion, that not all, um, teachers who might be back in classes on March first would have been fully vaccinated with the two doses per the, the, the guidance that comes with getting vaccinated, that it does need two doses. Am I correct?
No.
Okay, so, only those teachers who have gotten two doses will be coming back on, on or about March one?
Well, if, again, if, if the vaccines are available and we follow a tiered system, let's say, we would have, um, gotten all of our, um, uh, pre-K to five teachers vaccinated in the first week or two of, um, of February, then that means they would have their second dose by the end of February, depending on twenty-one days or twenty-eight-day waiting period in between doses. So, the majority, so that, um, so we would not, uh, our plan would be not to tier the return of students and therefore teachers until they've gotten that second dose.
Got it.
We follow that timeline. But again, it all depended on the vaccines that are available.
Absolutely. No, that's very helpful. Thank you. The, the second two concerns have to do with the motion, so I direct them to the motion maker. The motion reads, "By no later than March one." Now, if I'm a parent reading this for the first time, that tells me that, that classes could start before March one, and I might have some anxiety about that, because I might be trying to plan my life, my childcare, my job. And so, I'm a little troubled by the phrasing, "by no later than March one." Couldn't it just say, "all grade levels" on March one? Because it, to me, if, you know, if I'm taking this super literally, and I think I should, it's a motion, it's binding. So, that, that, that gives me some pause. So, that's my first concern. My second concern is that we don't specifically reference the metrics and the following of the metrics in the actual sentence of the motion. We just say, "consistent with this." And so, that question is actually for Darren. Do we have to state specifically what this means in the, the phrasing of the motion, or is the whole paragraph considered the motion? And I don't have to worry. I worry about the non-reference to the actual metrics and the following of them, and the collaboration in the sentence that says, that starts with "I move." So, I, I'm going to start with Darren, and then I, I would love, um, Mr. Silkworth to, to weigh in, too. I'm sorry, Mr. Burns, apologies.
Madam Vice President, uh, Madam President, Members of Board, Darren Burns, Board Attorney for the record. Uh, I, I heard Mr. Silkworth's motion and the discussion you've had on it. Um, there's nothing in the motion as it's written, or as I should say, presented, uh, that would run, you know, afoul of the law or any of the board's policies. Um, really, it's a policy choice for this board, uh, you know, how you would want it to read in regard to the metrics. But there's nothing about it that, that violates the law. Uh, I think it's clear, and I think Mr. Silkworth mentioned it, Dr. Arlato addressed it, that I believe, to the extent, uh, your, this motion would follow the superintendent's lead and recommendations and advice, it incorporates his, uh, use of those metrics. So, I don't think there's anything here that ignores the metrics. I don't think there's anything here that, um, somehow runs afoul of the, the Department of Health's metrics. So, I, I, I don't have a legal comment on it.
Awesome. Thank you. Mr. Silkworth, I still have a concern about "by no later than," because if I'm, if I'm a parent at home, again, trying to plan one's life, that indicates that it could be before March one. And I just want to be, I just want us to be clear as day as we can be with our, with our, um, community who's been on pins and needles and really been through the wringer with us going back and forth and up and down and, and, um, and, you know, this, this really, you know, for all being real, um, should have been Dr. Arlato's move, and, you know, we acted differently in November. I'd, I'd love to give this, I'd love to put this back in his lane where it belongs, but that's just not where we're at right now with this motion. So, I'm just curious about the, the "no later than" part of it.
Well, Dr. Arlato has said that he thinks that the March first date will work. He also talked about, uh, in terms of the vaccine, that that's being distributed in a tiered way. And, uh, Dr. Arlato and his staff will be the ones that will provide a timeline for the return of students based upon the hybrid model.
Okay, I, I do worry about it being before March one, just for planning purposes for our teachers, for our families, Dr. Arlato. Do you think there's any, um, do you think there would be any hope of getting students in, in the March, in the month of February, or can, can parents rely on, on, on March as our month?
I would, I would suggest that we would focus on March for the opening of the larger, right, the, the K to five and the large, uh, hybrid model, possibly in February, depending on when the vaccinations begin. If they begin, uh, pre, um, uh, earlier than February first, as Dr. Kalina Roman has stated, um, then we can certainly start to get some of the small priority group students back into buildings with their teachers and appropriate staff, um, during, uh, prior to March one. But I think March one is a target date for the hybrid model, the larger groups, right, opening up those full schools. I would also, uh, uh, I, I would rely on language that is in the, um, is in the motion, that, that states for in-person instruction for as many students as possible. Um, because we will not be able to open pre-K to twelve, all grade levels, all schools by March first. We simply won't have everybody vaccinated by then.
Okay, um, I'm just, the reason why I'm hammering you, you all about this is because, you know, if I'm a layperson, I am a layperson. If I am Joe Parent at home, reading this for what it is, you know, I, I just want to eliminate the confusion and the stress on our, on our parents and our, and our students. That doesn't mean I've made a decision one way or another on this. I could very well support, be supportive of this. I just want to put it on record where, where the confusion might lie so that we communicate appropriately with everyone involved, so that parents can see some relief and to their stress, and their kids can see some relief to the, to the stress of, of, of our conversations over the past many, many months. That, so that's all I have right now. Thank you. many, many months, that, so that's all I have right now, thank you.
Dr. Tobin.
Um, yes, thank you, I'm gonna pull. Um, so just, just to reiterate, because there's stress of parents and there's stress of teachers as well. So I just wanna make sure I understand what that clause for as many students as possible really entails, uh, and if I'm understanding you, Dr. Arlotta. Um, and, and then Mr. Silkworth, also your intent, um, it is that that possible is uh, an effect of how many teachers have gotten that second dose at that point, right? The, so if you're, if you're vaccinated at the beginning of February, and you have the twenty-eight day wait. You get vacs, the second vaccine, the end of February, you're, you as a teacher are potentially ready to go early March. Um, am I correct in that?
Yes.
Okay, alright, uh, and so that's why it's gonna roll, right? So as we, as, say, one, the first week of teachers have their first vaccines, the beginning, and then the second, and so forth, okay, so I just wanna make sure I understood that, and I, I do share, um, Ms. Schallheim's, uh, caution about the not later than, um, just because I do think it it does give the impression that that's some sort of hard, um, cutoff, so to speak. And I don't think if I've understood what Mr. Silkworth has said, that that's what he intended. Um, it is, I would suggest, again, Mr. Silkworth, I don't wanna put words in your mouth. The first of March is precisely what Dr. Kalyan Ramon said to us last week as his proposed possible date, so, um, it, it is, for those of us, through the, you know, we've been getting many, many emails, uh, which all urge us to many, many are saying, you know, follow the experts, so the expert told us early March was what he thought was a good target date to begin. Um, so I do think, just so that there is not a misinterpretation. I would, uh, I would also urge a way to think about changing just that little bit of language around, um, the not later than, um, possibly, and, 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 I'm, I'm not, I'm, I don't have a friendly amendment. I'm just suggesting if Mr. Silkworth is comfortable with that, that that might save us some, uh, some confusion. And an already stressful time for a lot of people, so, thank you.
So first of all, um, thank you, Mr. Silkworth, for, uh, introducing this motion, um. While there are some questions about, um, a little bit of detail and language, um, I'm encouraged to hear interest, um, in this motion, um, and so I, it makes me very happy that we could potentially, um, be making a solid plan. I do wanna say, what I like about the language of, um, no later than, is our schools are closed because of a pandemic. And they should only be closed at this point because of the pandemic. So, for example, um, our county executive announced today that the county is ahead of schedule in beginning to, um, give the vaccine to Group One B. Um, this is news since Dr. K reported to us, was that last week? I'm losing track of time. Um, and what if, let's say our governor announced tomorrow, I got a huge supply of uh, this vaccine, and I think it's really important for the state of Maryland that we get our schools open, I'm gonna give these over to MSD. Let's get our teachers vaccinated, so what if the conditions put us ahead of March first, let's say under those conditions, we could open even a week before that. Should we be staying closed just because there's anxiety that we're moving too fast? Or should we be getting our kids back to the classroom as soon as we can? One thing I can tell you is there's no way that we can, um, on Friday say, oh, guess what, we're ahead of schedule, so we're gonna open Monday, we can't do that, because there's going to have to be, um, a period of time between the first and second vaccine, so we're, we're gonna know what schedule we're on, so what I like about this language is Dr. Arlotta now has the flexibility to work with, um, Dr. K, Dr. Kalyan Ramon, to, um, to get our students back as soon as safely possible. Um, I haven't heard anyone interpret this, or, or consider that we're, that we're going to go against the recommendations. But why put language in the motion itself that ties us to the motion? That, you know, last week in February, we could open, but we can't, because the board moved otherwise. Um, so I don't see what's wrong with no later than personally. And again, because it relies on, um, the advice of our health officer and our, our, um, superintendent, there's always flexibility in there, we could end up behind schedule, right, and we don't wanna open March first then. So, um, that's, that's why I like the language the way it is. Um, Mr. Silkworth.
Um, President Ellis, thank you, I, I, I absolutely agree with what you just said. Uh, both of the points that you made, and having said that, I have no further comment.
So I, I believe we're ready to vote on the motion. Ms. Antoine.
I, I was actually ready to support this, but I heard that we would be bringing students, possibly bringing students back in before Dr. K's timeline of March, did I hear that correctly?
Are, are you, is that a question for me, Ms. Antoine?
I'm not sure where it came from, I'm trying to multitask on this end, but I, I don't wanna misunderstand. We're, we're talking no, uh, when no later than came up. There was, um, there was something about bringing in students before March. I'm reading this as March first as being our go date, unless our metrics say differently. So, so help me, please, understand what we're voting for. Because I cannot support bringing in students before the health experts say they should be coming back.
Can I clarify, maybe, because I think I mentioned bringing students in before March, maybe that was where your question was, I don't know. Um, our, our, my, the example I gave was because our health officer is giving us the health conditions for opening our schools. He's not, he's not giving us dates, he was giving us a timeline that he saw as doable, as in being realistic, right? Um, so that's, my statement was based on, these things are changing all the time. Um, his department just announced that we're ahead of schedule. Um, so I was giving a scenario when I said that, of what could, if it, but, the point I was making is, if the health officer gives the okay in his mind, if he advises us that it's safe, your teachers have been, you know, received two doses of the vaccine. Then we're just staying closed just because of the calendar instead of the conditions. And so that was just the point I was making.
Well, and I, and, but, I wasn't necessarily pinpointing you, pointing at you, because I said it way before you spoke. At, my concern is safety of these students. And, and honestly, with under ninety days of, of in-person education, it's what we're looking at, no matter what the go date is. Right, however, we have metrics to follow, that we should follow. Uh, and, and I don't wanna get into the semantics of no later than, I read it as March first being the go date. And a date that I believe, Dr. Arlotta, uh, as he shared with us, he can work from. However, I am not going to be in support of bringing in our students, and realistically, even our staff that's not vaccinated, or not fully vacci- vaccinated, I'm getting flustered, not fully vaccinated before March first, based on everything I heard tonight, based on the governor's, um, what he shared with us tonight. March first is a feasible date, anytime before that, though, I, it's, it's just not going to be safe or feasible in accordance to all that I've heard, uh, especially from our health experts. And, and that's where I am, I certainly believe Mr. Silkworth has introduced a strong motion that we can support. But if it, if, if it means us allowing students to come back before that March timeframe. I think that's dangerous, and I don't wanna support that. Um, that's it.
Well, i- i- if I might add, uh, Madam President, to those comments, uh, we would hope to bring back uh, some of our, uh, small group priority students, just like who are back in the buildings when the rest of the buildings were closed. In, uh, in September and October, we would like to start to bring those students back. Um, possibly during the month of February, before the March first deadline.
And, and I, I still have a problem with that, they're not in school now because our metrics are skyrocketing. And, and there's no guarantee that those metrics will be better, and even with the vaccination, there are risks. But we have more, more time to do this. I think March first is a feasible date that I think we all can agree on, based on information we have before us. But to bring those students back, it, to, in my opinion, is extremely dangerous. No matter what population of students they fall into because of our metrics right now.
Yes, ma'am, and I completely understand that, I, my, my last point would be, um, uh, and I'm not trying to change your mind in any way, shape, or form. But we would not be bringing even small groups of students back, the priority students, without the approval of the Department of Health. They approved our plans in the fall, and they would have to approve our plans to bring small groups of students back into buildings.
Ms., Ms. Antoine, it looks like you're speaking, I don't hear you, you don't look like you're on mute, but I don't hear you.
Okay, no, I, 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 I promised no, no timing, so I won't do that. But th- this is, this is now a concern, I think the motion is very strong, but the date needs to be March first.
Mr. Smith.
There we go. Yes, so we're all on the same page with the intent of the motion. When you say I move, that anyone can public schools begin to open for in-person instruction for as many students as possible. Begin to open, does that mean open, or does that mean start planning for, right? Because my mom says, Drake, begin to clean your room before twelve, okay, I picked up one sock, Drake, clean your room before twelve. It's very different, um, because like you can say, with a store, we're gonna begin to open at twelve, doesn't mean we're opening at twelve, that just means we are planning, so is that your intent to, that we start planning? Or that we bring some kids back, like the small groups back? Because I think that's where the confusion is at. Mr. Silkworth, this is for you.
Uh, well, I think the intent, um, is to kind of set a, 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 a framework for us to be able to work with, and, and as far as the timeline, that's up to Dr. Arlotta. That's up to Dr. Arlotta to come up with that, uh, that, um. I would not be, um, probably averse to, um, a, a friendly amendment to change a little bit of the wording there, um, to make it acceptable. Uh, one comment that I would make, uh, is that as board members, we have heard from so many of our stakeholders, parents, students, whatever, on both sides. And I can tell you that there are, there are parents and students out there that would say, I mean, I've gotten, we've gotten emails from parents that have said that their, their, their children are just absolutely not thriving. And, and they, they need to be back face to face, and, and given the fact that there's going to be a choice. They ha- they have the choice to stay virtual, or to go back face to face, um. That, they will have that choice, and there are parents out there that would say, I, 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 I need to bring my, 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 you know, my son or my daughter back. Uh, whether it's, uh, February twenty-first, or whatever it is. Uh, again, I'm, I'm open to a, a friendly emotion about that language, um.
Okay, great, and then, because, you know, I'm, I'm not offering a friendly amendment, but I'm just putting this out there, we need something that also touches on the metrics, because in your actual motion, there's nothing about metrics, right, your preamble. Uh, you talk about the medical experts, the health officer, vaccinations, but after I move, um, there's really nothing like that. So at the end, I mean, we should say with a goal of March first, assuming the metrics allow for it, something along those lines. And, you know, assuming that the metrics allow for it, then we need to, like, uh, specify whether we want to start planning, or we want to have kids back in the building by March first, because that's a huge difference, right, you can start planning February twenty-eighth, we started planning. Or you could bring kids back February twenty-eighth, that's, you know, the the begin to open for in-person instruction for as many students as possible, and then um, you know, when we get an update in the future. I think, you know, the metric should drive our decision, because we're talking about, you know, if the metrics allow for it, what are those metrics? Yes, the, Doc, Dr. Kalyan Araman came in, and he talked to us last week, last week, but he never said, I'm upping the metrics, or the metrics are staying the same. By metrics, I mean that ten per a hundred thousand case threshold, right? Right now, we're at, what, sixty, am I correct, sixty, we're at sixty, right, that's fifty over. Um, I don't think that in two months we'll get it that low with the vaccine, because I think, I know what will happen. Oh, the vaccine's coming, great, no more masks, cases go right back up, that's what happened in June, let's, let's not let history repeat itself here. The governor said, okay, we can start opening up slowly, hey, we're opening back up, no more masks. Now I'm still wearing a mask, be- because people, you, you know, they got ahead of themselves, and I don't want that to happen again. I know that might not have directly affect us, but we gotta keep that in the back of our head, right? Our decision is gonna affect a lot of people's lives, and it'll affect how they're gonna live their lives, right? If we remain closed, they're probably gonna think, okay, I better keep my mask, when we start opening up, they're gonna let their guard down, so let's keep that in the back of our head as well. Not just education of students, two, next time, in February, if we're deciding to open, I don't know how this vote's gonna go. Two things need to happen before we even, eve- either, before we even decide to open. One, we need a presentation from the county health officer, the day of we make our vote, so we can ask him all our questions, right, not ask him a week before. Then hear from Dr. Arlotta, I know Dr. Arlotta has a spectacular memory, but, you know, we need it straight from the source. And two, we need to be in person, I know that schedules happened, and we weren't expecting this conversation to come up so soon. But leaders lead from the front. You can't be the leader to say, do as I say, not as I do. I'd be much more comfortable if I was at the parham building, talking about this. Right, if I'm putting myself in those teachers' shoes, who are going to be in the building, probably if we make this vote sooner rather than later, so. You know, those are two things that must happen, not, you know, it'd be good if they, must, we need to make sure that we can have Dr. Kalyan Araman here, right? I know we can't control a schedule, but we gotta make our schedule fit his schedule. If that means meeting on a Sunday, I'll be on a Sunday, I think the Lord can forgive me. And really, two things, so, so really, we need to go back to this motion, I think I get the intent, I'm not too sure. And I, I, I'm still don't know why I wanna vote on this, because I hear everyone saying, you know. you know, kids are unengaged. I'm unengaged, right? I'm a student. I'm unengaged. My friends are unengaged. My brother's unengaged. I want to get back in the building, but I want to be safe simultaneously. We gotta think of it like this. Why are kids stressed? Because we're treating education like there isn't a pandemic. Not to say that we haven't adapted, but we haven't really rethought how we do education. We've just adapted. We basically just put education on a screen. Not to say that a lot of other stuff hasn't gone into this, but then more or less would have. But education on screen, we still have all these assignments due. We're still holding students to the same, I guess, academic standards. That's why they're stressed. I'm, I, I don't see why people don't see that. We're the ones that stressing these kids out, I'll tell you, because I know when this pandemic first hit, I was confused, right? So we're not even talking about springtime. I was confused over the summertime. Yes, I was sad I couldn't see my friends, but I wasn't stressed the way I'm stressed right now. First week of school, yes, I was sad I couldn't see my friends, but I wasn't stressed like I am right now. First month, I got a little more stress because of assignments came due. Middle first quarter, stressed just like I am right now, because I have all these assignments due. And I'm not seeing my, um, friends. It compounds. It compounds. I don't think reopening schools, yes, it will take away the, the social isolation aspect, but are we expecting kids to still hold them to the same standards that they were before the closing of schools? And I'm not saying that school, right, just because it's a pandemic, we should give up on teaching kids. I know we'll never give up on educating kids, but we gotta re- really rethink how we're educating kids. They're stressed because the world looks like it's falling apart. Is our nation going to survive this? That's what they're asking themselves. Are we going to survive? And now I have all these assignments that are coming due. Right? Not to say that we want to say, hey, you know what? You don't have to learn this year. Yes, but we have to maybe focus our attention on other places. Maybe focus class time instead of every single, you know, math subject. Maybe focus a little more time on actual social and emotional building within the class. Right? Not just saying having community wellness for it, but social and emotional stuff in the math class, in the English class, right? Set time aside.
I'm so sorry. Can I ask you to stick to the, I, I, I think your sticking point was the date that we're opening. I just need to keep us on, on topic, um, out of respect for everyone's time and, um, remind that we're trying, trying to keep our remarks as brief as we can. Thank you.
I really do appreciate that, President Ellis, and take this with so much respect. I mean, we can't take this decision lightly. And everything that I just said is why we're making this decision. Because students are stressed because of their workload. They're getting the same workload as if we're still in a regular school environment, right? I mean, no one can tell me otherwise because I'm a student. I'm dealing with this every day. I haven't been responding to all those emails I've been getting because I'm trying to keep up with my work. And it's not my teacher's fault, right? They're not, they're trying to meet deadlines set by the district, set by the state. We really have to rethink how we're educating students in a pandemic. I hope everyone thinks about my words because that's why we're in this situation. That's why kids are stressed out. That's why they're unengaged because they're treating it, education like there is no pandemic. You may disagree with me. But I'm coming from the point of astute. I've asked you all really think about that and don't just focus on, hey Drake, this conversation is about reopening schools. We want reopening, reopening schools because kids are unengaged.
Point of order, Madam President, um, the member is engaging directly to our president in response to her suggestion and has deviated, I believe, from the germane intent of the debate of the motion of order. Please consider. Thank you. Yeah, let, let's please keep our discussion on, on the topic.
Of course, of course.
Of the motion on the table.
Like, I'm just saying all this because the background needs to decide where we're at right now. And I just felt like that had to be said because we were kind of tiptoeing around that issue. And I just want to say in my response, I didn't try to name any members, um, um, by name, so I don't think I was addressing them. But I will move on. Let me go back to my first couple of points. One, we need to adjust where we say begin to open for in-person instruction. And two, like March first can't be a hard deadline because one, the metrics don't allow it. And two, what exactly are those metric adjustments? Right? We haven't heard, well, the vaccine's getting distributed so we can adjust our metrics to this, or at least I haven't heard that. So those are all my comments. And it was long, but it really had to be said. So thank you.
And I'm sorry, I honestly didn't think we were going to do another round, so that's why I didn't call in rounds, I don't believe. So, um, now, give me a moment. I need to remember who's spoken so that everyone gets a fair turn. So I believe the, uh, Ms. Antoine and Mr. Smith, were you right after Ms. Antoine? Was there anyone in between?
No, I was right after Ms. Antoine.
Thank you. I just needed that help. Um, so I would go, all right, I'll, I'll go with Ms. Shawheim, um, with her hand up, but now I'm, I'm keeping track of hands and it's a little more difficult. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Yeah, I, I want to offer a couple friendly amendments. I don't want to name March one. I, I think it could be by no later than the end of March. And instead of consistent with this, I should, I think it should read consistent with the superintendent's recommendations and advice from the county health officer and, and medical experts. Because tha- that stuff is great, but it's in the preamble. It's not in the motion. So th- those are my two sticking points. Offering as a friendly amendment. Mr. Silkworth?
Uh, I would suggest that I would not have any issue, uh, with either of those two recommendations. Um, I, I felt that it was, it was understood in the, the motion that, uh, this is all contingent upon the metrics. Um, and so Ms. Shawheim, I, I would, uh, I would be certainly willing to, uh, accept, uh, that friendly amendment.
Thank you.
Now we're in into this. No more speaking. I have Mr. Burns on, please. Thank you.
I'm not sure, having listened to this, why, uh, who's asking a question?
I am. Thank you. So, um, a friendly amendment was offered. Can a friendly amendment be something that substantially changes the motion or does that have to be an amendment since we've been debating this motion for some time now?
As, as has been discussed, again, for the record, Darren Burns, Board Attorney, as has been discussed at prior meetings, there really technically isn't something in standard parliamentary procedure or Roberts rules called a friendly amendment. You, you have primary motions and you have secondary or additional motions attempting to change that motion. Remember that when a motion's made and seconded, it's not the maker's motion. It's the board's motion. So, so sometimes folks suggest what we call friendly amendments in the hope that the maker of the motion may wish to themselves withdraw their motion, rephrase and re- repost their motion. But the truth of the matter is, at this point in time, if someone wants to amend Mr. Silkworth's motion, uh, and there isn't some general consensus or an agreement on his part, what really should happen is there should be a formally proposed amendment. If seconded, voted on, and if that passes, that alters the board's motion. That's the way it works. Um, and so sometimes in these places, it's helpful to have the motion maker or, 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 or the, or the body's clerk reread the motion for the record so that you have it in front of you. And then again, ask whoever made the friendly amendment to state specifically the exact change in language. Because if you keep having discussion without specific language, you are losing the record that is meant to be kept for the public.
Okay, so.
Thank you, Mr. Burns.
Given that, I'm going to move that we amend the motion to read. I move that Anorond County Public Schools begin to open for in-person instruction for as many students as possible at all grade levels by the end of March twenty twenty-one and that the superintendent that the superintendent in collaboration with the Anorond County Health Officer and other medical experts provide the board and the public as soon as practical, as soon as practical, a timeline detailing how the, uh, reopening plan will be implemented.
Second. So we will go around, um, and discuss the amendment, um, Ms. Corkedell.
Thank you, President Ellis. Um, I appreciate you, um, keeping us in order and such a passionate and emotional um, issue, um, and making sure we're respecting one another by obliging our Roberts rules and others. I appreciate the, uh, concerns of my fellow members. Um, however, I think that, um, I will be passing on these amendments. I think that this affords the flexibility. Um, and I, I, I just want to remind everybody that it's the superintendent's duties to do this in the first place, um, to, to operate our schools. And every local education agency all across the country is engaging this perhaps at a little more involved level than you would in a normal circumstance. And no, no reason why needs to be stated. But I think it's important that we do have target dates. The same parents and families that we're referring to are also looking for what that possibility is. And as other members have pointed out, the publication of the date is as such. Worse, our second semester starts in February. And we have to recognize the least amount of disruption the safest way in the best interest of all. And I just don't feel that those amendments are substantive enough in changes, uh, that would effectively, um, accomplish what has has been expressed. But more importantly, I do agree with the no later than March first. And I do agree that the language put forth affords the superintendent that flexibility. And then lastly, I'm going to say that to, um, promulgate and to reference directly in the manner that it is proposed an agency that is, in- involves other people outside of us. Um, I believe is not appropriate and does need to remain in the preface as we have done time and time again to demonstrate the respect and the boundaries that we have um, as it relates to, um, working with our county partners versus including them in our direct board business. So I, I'm not going to be, uh, voting for the amendments for those reasons. As I said, uh, number one, that is best suited for the preamble. Number two is the superintendent has not demonstrated anything but flexibility and a willingness to work with everyone and continues to do so daily. And I don't think needs instructed to that. That's part of his job already. And so, um, and as I said, the, the date is the date. And the, if we are truly following the recommendation of the health officer, the way this motion is constructed does meet his obligation as well as his also stated intent to bring back those other special small groups if possible, if and when possible, um, in accordance with Dr. Alato's stated advice to us and most recent comments. So, um, I don't see, uh, that this is creating a situation that actually allows people to well prepare and gives them the six weeks that they want. Because we're always going to need to know two weeks in advance and we're always going to get those updates. And Dr. Kaliana Rama has already agreed to come visit us. I think to edict it is, I, I, I don't find a respectable approach to our part, our strong partnership with Dr. Kaliana Rama, and I know there was no ill intent. But I have to say, uh, as presented, I believe would possibly leave that, um, impression. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. And I'll give another reminder, um, for the sake of, uh, everyone in this discussion, since we've just taken a motion, introduce an amendment, this is going to go on until we now have voted on both of these. So, um, I just want to remind everyone to please stick to the topic of the amendment and try to be as concise and brief as possible. Thank you. Sorry, I didn't call in the next person, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, President Ellis. Uh, Ms. Shawhan or, or Ms. Howe, could someone reread the amended motion? Or even better, like send that to the board via email just so we can have it in front of us? Because I just want to make sure what the actual change is where I seen Ms. Howe's up. If someone wants to read it or email it.
Yes, please.
Thank you, Ms. Howe. I'm still hung up on the begin to open aspect. I, I really, I think we gotta get this right, um. Ms. Shawhan, with your, what did you intend to do with your amended, amendment?
I was trying to mention the metrics in the motion because in the motion prior, they were in the preamble, which is not the same thing. And I was trying to get it out of the month of February because to date, we haven't even heard that that was a recommendation by the county health officer as, as he, in his words, stated the other day. And so I don't, that's what I was trying to do, um. I don't want to jump down some rabbit hole that I'm going to get gaslit again, but I, I'm just, just godsmacked by, um, the reaction to trying to do those two things. And I'll just leave it there.
I think me and you are on the same page here. I just want to make sure that, like, the word metrics actually in the motion. I, I know you involve the county health, uh, department, but they're involved with the timeline portion, not the metric.
If you have another suggestion, great, because like.
Yeah, I am concerned and you all know that I've tried to focus on parliamentary procedure that this board uses, not strict Roberts rules. But understand, the board has a primary motion that remains on the table. And there has been a moved and second amendment to that motion. This debate is solely, should solely be a debate on Ms. Shawheim's language. No other discussion of changes to it because then you're quote unquote doing a tertiary amendment to a second amendment to a motion. It's you have a proposed amendment to a proposed motion on the table. That's what this debate should be. And then you take a vote on the proposed amendment. Until that debate occurs, Mr. Silkworth's motion is still the primary motion. So your debate should be focused on Ms. Shawheim's motion to amend the primary motion, and that's it. And it's starting to sound like it's just more policy debate about the topic, which is taking you away from disposing of the secondary motion.
Thank you, Mr. Burns.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Okay. Well, I think we know what we want with the original motion and we see where this amendment is at. And I don't think this amendment is going to really change that much. I mean, Ms. Shawhan, I think you should withdraw your amendment. And then we try it again with a different amendment.
If it makes the meeting go not into the early morning hours, so be it.
The amendment is withdrawn? Yes. Okay. So we are back to the, we are no longer debating the amendment. I'm going to remind everyone how, so a motion was made. Board members went around and spoke. Couple of questions were asked, went all the way around. I called for any other comments, didn't see any, indicated we were about to vote, and then there was a hand raised, and then another hand raised, and then another hand raised. So three people have spoken twice on this motion. So I'm going to go back around to the people who have not spoken twice in the round order. So that would start with Ms. Corkedell.
Thank you, Ms. Ellis. We're back on the primary motion, right?
Correct.
Okay, yeah. I don't have anything to add. I think that this well speaks to the flexibility that we need to provide for to Dr. Arlato and Dr. Kalianarama and all of their teams. I think it gives clear and clear guidance to the public and to our staff as to what our target is. Always have to have a target. And there is no indication in either how we have performed in the past or will continue to perform by policy, by board norm or otherwise, that this will not continue. And I believe the members were also provided with, you know, that there's going, there's other motions, as you had mentioned, that may be able to speak to some of those details. But I also think that it reinforces our oversight versus our direct attempt to manage operations. Our health officer works very fluid and very hard every single day with everyone and has reported to us the intent, as well as Dr. Lado has, to adjust the metrics. It's a question I directly asked the last time. And I asked for an update and received as recently as tonight. So I would just urge everybody just to focus on, is this desirable and vote on it? Because we've got to move forward. And we only can do based on what we know. There's always a yeah, but and a what if. I can come up with enough crazy what ifs under the planet all day long. The end of the day, we need to start making these decisions. We have plenty of room for flexibility and adjustment. It's not going anywhere. And I believe that it would be our duty and obligation to retain that flexibility that we have been also, all agencies have had to do in government. This isn't just a unique thing to us. Not a unique thing to LEAs. Every single agency and every single government level, way, shape, and form is having to struggle with the return of their employees and the return of their clients. And we are not any different. And I do believe this is the start, as I said in the beginning. We have to start somewhere. This is a logical start. It's totally in alignment with our advisement. And I believe there are other motions that are also going to help shape and mold how we receive information and how our constituency does as well. I want to thank everybody. I know everybody's working hard and looking at this because we care, we want to get it right. But at some point, we do have to vote and make a decision. And I hope it'll happen while we're still on 114. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Corkedell. I believe next would be Ms. Frank. Am I missing? Ms. Tovin. Dr. Tovin.
So I, I, I really want to move forward with this. I am concerned, as I said, we have wording that makes it sound like we've set a deadline of March 1st. And I think that's, I I, I want to incur, I want to be clear. And I want to incur the least amount of confusion possible for everyone out there. That somehow if we hit March 1st and things aren't where people envision from this that they should be, that there will be an added layer of confusion. So that is what I'm wrestling with right now because I don't think that's the intent of, from what Mr. Silkworth has said. But I think it can easily be interpreted that way. I do think we need to give the superintendent the leeway and the flexibility he needs and that he has, that he does every day to make these decisions and use, as he said, all the advice that he takes. So I'm frankly less concerned about that part of it. But I am concerned that this could be interpreted as a deadline and that I think is a problem. So I'm wrestling with it.
Sorry, I'm trying to track to make sure I get to everyone. So I, my understanding is out of who has spoken, it's just myself and Mr. Silkworth to complete the round of comments. So I feel very strongly that we have a motion here that sets a goalpost. March 1st is our, is our goalpost. It gives everyone something to focus on. But it is not an absolute. There's, we're far too many unknowns and that will remain the case as long as we're in a pandemic. There needs to be flexibility. I see the motion worded such that 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 flexibility exists. We are, here's the, here's the part that I'm struggling with from some of what I'm hearing tonight is people saying March March 1st or before March 1st will not be safe. And however, I hear everyone, I haven't heard an argument against tonight, I have not heard an argument tonight against following the health officer's advice on what is safe for opening our schools. The motion supports following the advice of our health officer for safely opening our schools. I am a little concerned that if, I don't remember the specifics of what Dr. K said, but he gave what he envisioned as a reasonable timeline to be able to expect to reach that level of safety. But we don't turn to our health officer on a calendar issue. We turn to him on public health and he advised us on the conditions under which we should open our school. So if Dr. K, Dr. Kaliana Ramon believes that it's safe to open our schools after teachers have been fully vaccinated or if he introduced some other metric. That's the extent of his advice. Dr. Arlato has given us his advice. And Dr. Arlato has advised that he believes it's reasonable to meet those safety conditions by the beginning of March. There needs to be flexibility in the plan, but I have to tell you, when I heard the language being potentially changed to late March, how confusing is that for our families? If you're still, if you still think that we could get open by March 1st, but the the mode, the action that this board takes has the end of March as the goalpost. So I think we need to be as aspirational as we can, realistic, but optimistic about our opening date. And let the health conditions dictate when we ultimately open. We have got to stop being focused on a calendar. Because the fact is, again, it's a virus keeping our schools closed and overcoming the dangers of that virus is what will allow us to open our schools. So I applaud and appreciate this motion that allowed for flexibility, the following the advice of our health officer and our superintendent. And getting our kids back to the classroom as soon as we safely can. And so I really hope that this motion succeeds. Thank you. Mr. Silkworth.
Well, for the sake of brevity, I would say that if I could repeat what Ms. Corkedell had said and then what President Ellis has just said, that would have been my closing. Except to say that what I do is generally, it's not generally, it's always for what I think is in the best interest of the kids, our teachers, our staff, and our school system, our communities. This is a framework. There is flexibility. I would suggest that if this passes, and I certainly hope it does, there are some upcoming motions which will clarify and I think satisfy some of the concerns that many of you or some of you are voicing. Thank you.
I see Mr. Smith's hand up. We're going to have to enter another round. I'm not taking hands anymore. I'm sorry, but that took us down a rabbit hole last time. So I'm, I'm going to ask this. Ms. Ms. Corkedell, do you have anything else?
Madam President, I'm of the opinion of our old, of our standard that has been around since before we were around, but obviously the author of the motion gets the last say and has made the last say. I would not entertain continuing.
Thank you. I have no further questions. He has the right to the last say. And
I will certainly always put it back to Mr. Silkworth. I really do hope that we can, you know, I just don't want to belabor and repeat any, any points, please. So I will allow Mr. Smith. I do want to remind board members that we do have something in parliamentary procedure that can lead to a vote. So, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, President Ellis. I would like to offer an amendment, and it goes like this. I move to amend Mr. Silkworth's motion to be read. I move that Anarondal County Public Schools aim to open for in-person instruction for as many students as possible at all grade levels by no later than March 1st, 2021, comma, given that the new metrics as set by the health officer allow for it, comma, allow for, comma, and that consistent with this, the superintendent and his staff provide the board and the public as soon as practicable timeline detailing how the reopening plan will be implemented.
Second.
Apologies, I'm making a note. Mr. Smith has made a motion. Ms. Corkedell.
Could we read that again, please? Before I ask my question, I want to make sure my question is accurate or my comments are accurate to the
Ms. Howe, because if she got it, then they'll know she got it. If she didn't, then I'll ask Mr. Smith. Ms. Howe, are you able to reread the amendment?
Unfortunately, I actually just asked Mr. Smith if he could send that to me. I was not able to capture everything.
That, that's important to know. So that's why I asked you. All right, go ahead, Mr. Smith.
So just to amend Mr. Silkworth's motion as follows. I move that Anarondal County Public Schools aim to open for in-person instruction for as many students as possible at all grade levels by no later than March 1st, 2021, comma, given that the new metrics as set by the health, by the health officer allow for it. And then it's the rest of his motion, and that consistent with this, the superintendent and his staff provide the board and the public as soon as practicable, as soon as practicable, practicable, a timeline detailing how the reopening plan will be implemented.
Thank you, Mr. Smith and President Ellis for that.
Thank you, Mr. Smith and President Ellis for that. Point of information. I. Respect, I, I, I see where Mr. Smith is trying to go here. With the comfort zone of the language and the wordsmithing. I do disagree though that. Replacing the word begin with the word aim is not a. How should I say, a. Typical or easily legally defined, we're, we're creating law or not law, but we're creating action. That is upheld in law. And so there are some awkwardness, awkwardness, there is a little awkwardness to some of the language sometimes. But I think the word aim is not well-defined in any of, of our prior actions and such, so. And there is a substantive definition difference. Provided we could somehow figure out how to achieve an aim. From, not, not that aim isn't achievable, but I, I think in an action. It's noteworthy, but it, there's a staunch difference to begin something and to aim for something. I, I think our, our folks have been looking for us to aim for a solution and a decision and. The aiming time is over and there's time where you just gotta pull trigger. So to speak, and, and so. Secondly. Health metrics don't allow anything. That is actually, I believe, a juxtaply opposed to the executive order of the governor. That states that we. Allow. Through our authority, allow our students to return. Dr. Kaliana Rama, as I guess we. I pardon Ms. President Ellis for me reiterating a portion of your last statement, but I think it's applicable for this amendment. And carries over that metrics don't give permissions, metrics provide guidance. And so. That is, and that is out of our realm because it presumes that a. I, I believe his language is also presuming that new metrics have been created. And Dr. Arlato reported already to us and some of them were in response to my questions, not just of tonight, but of the previous week. That they are, that they are in the works. And that they are being provided. So that's already been reported to us. And our preamble captures that intent, which is a key and critical component of all of our policies. Of how we adopt our motion, most of our motions, of our proclamations, of our resolutions and of our preamble. And to presume that it lacks significance, I think would be detrimental path because. That would imply a lot of our work is not as precise. Ultimately, we're gonna have to make a decision on this. I'm gonna be a pass on this amendment. I do appreciate and respect. The decision to support this amendment or not to support it, same with the ultimate motion. And so with that stated. Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Mr. Smith.
Okay, sorry. Oh, okay, so this is on the amendment. Mr. Smith, you will come back to you. So Ms. Antoine.
Thank you, President Ellis. I, I, as I stated before, I think the original primary motion that Mr. Silkworth. Offered was a strong motion with the exception of interpretation that we would be bringing students back before March. The amendment that is on the table still has language in there that may allow for that interpretation. And I am, I am just. Seriously uncomfortable. When it was emphasized, not just introduced, that a. A timeframe for vaccinating, seeing results, getting info back, otherwise. In addition to what Dr. Lotto shared tonight, that March 1st is a feasible date for him to be prepared to. To aim for or begin reopening. I, I, I am uncomfortable with supporting anything that goes before March. And therefore with that language in there still, I'm unable to support even this amendment.
Mr. Silkworth.
I, I think that the original motion does allow the flexibility. It does allow. For the advice of the medical experts and, and also it, it gives Dr. a lot of the flexibility that I think is needed. So. Having said that, I have no further comments.
Ms. Frank.
I just wanted to mention that I did have, I have a subsequent motion that I think would alleviate some of the concerns that I've heard about the metrics and. Getting an update from the superintendent before the actual launch date. So with that in mind, I think the original motion was. A well-constructed motion and I plan to vote against the amendment.
I think, I mean, Ms. Ellis, you're, you've been muted this whole time. I assume you were calling on me?
I am aware. I'm having some technical issues, sorry. So yes, it is your.
Yeah, thank you.
Ms. Schalheim.
I want to make sure everyone understands that we're, we're talking about a vaccine and a virus and not a calendar. So. You know, I just wanted to state that. I, my, my, my concerns before remain. Concerns at this point, Lord knows where I'm gonna land on this and I. I don't know, a lot of the hope I had for this evening has been dashed, so you know, thanks for that. And. You know, if the virus doesn't follow a calendar, then. Why are we hung up over? And if we're talking about flexibility, then why aren't we being flexible with the, the date in the, the motion? So. I don't know, my dreams and hopes of getting done early and having consensus have disappeared. That's all I have for right now.
Dr. Tobin.
Yeah, I, as I said earlier, that's, I, I do have to, I think everything else about the motion. Is in good shape. I just think that there is an incongruity. Between the flexibility that we're discussing and. As I've said, the no later than March 1st. I think it just doesn't. Hang together and will, could be subject to, to a lot of misinterpretation. And, and I, and I just think at this point, we don't need more confusion on that score. So that remains my concern. Thank you.
Before I speak, I haven't missed anyone, right? I'm coming back to you, Mr. Smith. Yeah, I, I am, I appreciate what. Mr. Smith is, is seeking to do with this amendment. I'm, I'm just fearful that we are. We are. Picking apart. The English language and. Trying to envision all the different ways that people might interpret. What we actually pass. So I, I was. Very happy and comfortable with the motion that was introduced and I still am. So I, for that reason, I. I'm not gonna support the amendment. I want to, to vote on the motion that was before us. And I'm sorry, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, President Ellis and everyone. Please, I'll preface this by saying. I know you all said where you're shooting for, but try to come at this with an open mind. I know it's getting late, but we gotta realize, you know, we're. This is a very important, this is probably the most important decision we have made up to this point, so we can't make it lightly. So. I would just ask that you please listen to this intently with an open mind. First of all, with the aim, that just means what we're shooting for. That's what we're trying for. Right? I'm aiming to score a 1400 on SAT. You know? That's like my goal, that's still our goal, right? March 1st will still be our goal to get some students in, but we won't say that we're gonna like start because if we can't. You know, what we say in the motion is very important because that might open us up to litigation or anything else. So we gotta be very careful and to say, no, the new metrics. One, they allow for teachers and staff to prepare. We're kind of talking about how is everyone going to prepare? If Dr. Kaliana Rama comes out with new metrics and he says, hey, the metric is this. Staff and students, they can follow the metrics daily and they can see, are we close to it? Should I start preparing? Or are we super far away? Right now, they don't know that. They, they might just get an email to Blue, hey, report for duty. They weren't expecting that. Now they only have two weeks. I know. You may think that's a lot of time, but you know, that's still turning on a dime. This will allow them. The flexibility. I hope everyone's listening to what I have to say. This will allow them the flexibility. Right? Because they can follow the metrics. And then lastly, the part, the, the new metrics is set by Dr. Kaliana Rama. A number of members said. We're going to follow the advice of our county health officer. We're going to follow his advice. I'm not saying that we wouldn't, but this is just to make sure we hold ourselves accountable. I mean, we think about. The, this amendment is just shoring it up, making sure that there is no loophole or in that no one's confused. We're shooting for that date if the metrics allow. Let's say March 1st, the metrics are 100. But everyone's vaccinated. They want to send people back. If the metrics are 100 and every, if, if the case rates 100 and everyone's vaccinated, I probably wouldn't, but how the motion is written now. To begin, we would have to send somebody back unless we step in, but this would just shore it up, right? This says if the metrics allow for it, the metrics is set by him. I don't think anyone on here is, is a medical doctor. I think I'm safe to assume that he is. You know, the number of people that work in the healthcare profession every day. I don't know the slightest bit about this pandemic from what I'm told. From people like him. So I think that, you know, following his metrics, putting it in the motion will go a long way. So I hope you all. Listen to this. Not saying that we won't do it. This is not to stop anything. This is just to make sure that we're following the guidance. As set forth and that there's no room for confusion. I'm gonna reiterate it one more time, then we can vote. Instead of begin, the word aim, as in we're shooting for, I'm aiming for this. And then we say. Given that the new metrics. As set by the health officer, given that the metrics, just in case it's way too high and we can't. Or we're just, and just, this will give people time to prepare and we're making sure that we're following him. And I think that this amendment does that, pass this amendment, then I'll be more than happy to vote to pass the amended version. But as the motion stands right now, I don't think I can support it because there's too much confusion and that's shown just by, as, just by the confusion that the board. Has had with it. So imagine what the general public will have with it. So that's that.
Okay, Ms. Howell. We're voting on the amendment.
Okay, I'm gonna reread the amendment. I move that Anaronda County Public Schools aims open for in-person instruction for as many students as possible at all grade levels by no later than March 1st, 2021. Given that the new metrics as set by the health officer allow for it. And that consistent with this, the superintendent and his staff provide the board and the public as soon as practicable a timeline detailing. How a reopening plan will be implemented. Ms. Corkadel.
Nay.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Antoine.
Nay.
Mr. Silkworth.
Nay.
Ms. Frank.
Nay.
Ms. Schalheim.
Aye.
Dr. Tobin.
Nay.
And Ms. Ellis.
Nay.
That's two in the affirmative and six in the negative motion fails.
So we had gone around a couple times. Couple times we were about to vote. Mr. Smith raises his hand. I'm not going to go back around unless. Someone indicates that they. Need to speak, otherwise. We will vote. Ms. Howell. We are voting, I'm sorry, we're voting on the amendment.
No, no.
On the original motion is what I meant to say. Thank you.
Based upon the advice of the superintendent, which includes the metrics and advance or advice from the Anaronda County Health Officer and other medical experts. And based upon Anaronda County's commitment that our teachers and staff will have the opportunity to be sufficiently vaccinated for COVID-19. By the end of February, 2021, I move that Anaronda County Public Schools begin to open for in-person instruction. For as many students as possible at all grade levels by no later than March 1st, 2021. And that consistent with this, the superintendent and his staff provide the board and the public as soon as practicable. A timeline detailing how the reopening plan will be implemented. Ms. Corkadel.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
No.
Ms. Antoine.
Nay.
Mr. Silkworth.
Aye.
Ms. Frank.
Aye.
Ms. Schalheim.
Aye.
Dr. Tobin.
Aye.
Ms. Ellis.
Aye.
Motion passes 6-2.
Thank you. I was remiss. I, I thought of this earlier and then I, the thoughts slipped my mind. I mentioned that there. Were multiple motions that were submitted. By board members for this evening. The other motions did not involve the date of opening our schools. So. I think the public is concerned that maybe there were some different or competing motions. Nothing was pre-submitted that, that. In any way competed with or was in opposition to the motion we just voted on. So. I'm just letting people know that there are some more motions that involve. The reopening of our schools, but they, they will, did not in any way. Take away from the motion that was just passed. So. Ms. Frank.
In light of the decision, the board made to begin reopening schools for hybrid learning, no later than March 1st, 2021. I move that the board shall receive an update from the superintendent on the status of the reopening implementation. And the health metrics on February 17th, 2021, and any updates or revisions to the plan will be communicated to all stakeholders at that time.
Second. I have a motion and a second, Ms. Corkadel.
I have no comments and. That makes sense. To say that. It, it, it's a logical next step to what we are trying to accomplish. Thank you, Ms. Frank, and thank you, President Ellis.
Mr. Smith.
No comment. No comment.
Ms. Antoine.
Uh, uh, may I introduce a point of clarification, please, President Ellis? Is a motion necessary or could the board just direct this happen, please, without a motion?
Uh, I think that could happen. Uh, there is a motion on the table. Um, but I, I, I don't want to speak for the motion maker. I mean, yes, it could. Doesn't have to. I get to what you're saying. I don't know.
It's, it's, it just looks like a directive. And, and I would say that asking for a point of clarification, not to trump whatever Ms. Frank is introducing, but I believe it's something we could do by consensus.
Um, well, I'll go around and then, um, see if there's any other thoughts. Uh, Mr. Silkworth.
Um, I think that it's important based upon the motion that we just passed. It's important, uh, the, the, the key word is flexibility. There is flexibility. We have a duty to the families, to our students, to our parents to make sure that they continue to be aware as to what's happening. I think because of this motion, we would have a, an, an update uh, in terms of where we are with COVID. Uh, we would get advice from the medical experts, Dr. Kay, uh, and so forth. And so I, I, I think it's important that, that we do this.
Uh, Ms., no, not Ms. Frank, Ms. Schalheim.
Um, I would like to offer a friendly amendment that we replace the word um, on with the word by, because we might well adjust our our meeting calendar and then we would be in violation of this motion now, wouldn't we? So that is my friendly amendment. It's just the changing out of the word. Um, by, uh, removing the word on and replacing it with the word by.
I think that could be a technical amendment if it's, um, acceptable.
Yeah, I, I think that's an excellent suggestion. I'm happy to take that. Thank you.
Um, great. And, uh, I don't know what else to say about this. I, it, it's, it's, yes, it's all fine. I have nothing more at this moment.
Dr. Tobin.
Uh, yeah, no comments at this moment.
And I just want to say, um, Ms. Antoine, I get your point and I normally um, prefer that approach. So I think that was a very valid, um, point that this is something, we could just put it on the agenda. Um, but in light of the enormity of, of what we're doing here tonight, um, I like the commitment to our community. Um, that we are going to watch this carefully and again, the health and safety of everyone involved is always, uh, the most important piece of this. So, um, for that reason, I, I would love for the board to do this as an action. Um, and I think it's a very, uh, oh, I also, uh, someone mentioned, um, having Dr. Kalyana Ram in here. Um, that invitation, I'm certain will be extended by Dr. Arlato to him, and I am very, very hopeful that he will be able to attend, but obviously this board or doctor, or Dr. Arlato can't commit him to that, but we do hope he'll be able to, um, to inform us that night. Um, and so, uh, back to Ms. Frank.
Um, I, I think this just sort of closes the loop a little bit on what we were trying to accomplish with the first motion and, um, you know, I, I just hope that we, we've sort of hashed all of our, our concerns out and we're ready to vote.
We are ready to vote, Ms. Howell.
I'm just gonna reread, um, the motion as amended, as the, with the friendly amendment. In light of the decision, the board made to begin reopening schools for hybrid learning, no later than March first, two thousand and twenty-one, the board shall receive an update from the superintendent on the status of the reopening implementation and the health metrics by February seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one, and any updates or revisions to the plan will be communicated to all stakeholders at that time. Ms. Corkadel.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Antoine.
Aye.
Mr. Silkworth.
Aye.
Ms. Frank.
Aye.
Ms. Schalheim.
Aye.
Dr. Tobin.
Aye.
Ms. Ellis.
Aye.
Motion passes eight-zero.
Um, Ms. Corkadel.
Thank you, President Ellis. Um, I just want to predicate this with just a little bit of history for the benefit of our members and, and others um, new and otherwise. If you recall, um, it, we go all the way back to um, our planning over the summer months. Um, and reaffirmed again in September, a series of special sessions and regular sessions between August, September, and all the way through the first meeting of November. This board has reaffirmed the superintendent's advisement that we have small groups of individ, of priority students that, um, require our immediate attention. In the course of the fall, um, although all's, all of us are, have stated we are virtual, we know that even ourselves have had our students, um, in these small groups, prioritized groups coming into the schools and many, um, of our neighboring districts, even of comparable sizes have um, either stated that it is their intent to do so on the immediate and some have already done so, is my understanding. And this board has stayed committed to understanding and appreciating the uniqueness of these groups and that their learning, uh, needs, their educational service needs are truly different than the majority of our students. And so, um, what I did was I, um, I did not want to reinvent or redefine that which we have already uh, agreed upon in the past and adopted. And so the language that you are seeing in this, after, uh, the language that you are going to hear, um, and, uh, is in accordance with what we have previously adopted. And I will just say that I don't want to reiterate what we've already have in action. But I think it is important in light of this motion being passed in the interest of clarification to the community. And based on the affirmations and advisement made by Dr. Arlato tonight, that we reaffirm our continued commitment to these groups and allow Dr. Arlato that unique flexibility that otherwise we have created boundaries for our regular groups. These groups, I do believe, need our unique attention and we need to provide for that unique flexibility. Um, and so with that stated, um, in, as a historic reminder and update to folks, I move that the superintendent prioritize implementation of his recommended hybrid in-person learning plan for small groups of identified priority students such as students with special needs, English language learners, students in our centers of applied technology and students who are struggling in the virtual format. That this be commenced as soon as possible and that the superintendent be authorized to make exceptions to the boards previously adopted reopening directives in order to meet these objectives.
Second.
Uh, that does conclude the motion. I would like to explain a couple of the words that, um, I just stated. Um, so to help facilitate hopefully an efficient, uh, debate on this and, um, clarification otherwise. The, uh, language such as students are all language that we have all agreed upon in prior motions. As I said, um, what I am reiterating is something that is, is still in effect to this day and is not a, uh, change to it. I did, um, soften the language. Our original, uh, motion that is still in act to, you know, um, even with this new motion, basically does say aggressively pursue. I thought that the word aggressively was a little too aggressive. Um, and so, um, I asked for it to be commenced as soon as possible, understanding that as soon as possible has the same implications that our prior motion did in that we are affording flexibility. We are promoting, um, a the priority that these students are. Uh, my experience is that, um, probably half of who we hear from that are, um, advocating for reopening as soon as possible, um, are in these categories. And as I stated in my original preamble, um, as Dr. Salmon had pointed out, these are the groups that we need to focus on. These are the groups that are highest risk of learning loss. And to what extent that is, I believe, has the potential of being magnified in their current conditions and situations. And so I am not apologetic nor shy about advocating for these groups to have this choice uh, because of the implications to the contrary. And in light of what we are hearing, the advisement of our superintendent and even the flat-out recognition, um, on multiple occasions by our agency partners such as, but not exclusive to Dr. Kalyanarama at our State Board of Education and many other agencies that we work with. I believe everybody recognizes this need is dire and more extreme in some cases than perhaps the average student. And so I would hope that my members will consider this and also consider the fact that the reality is, is that this board has always supported it. And I would hope that we would not, um, abandon, um, or give an appearance of abandonment to these groups when they need it now more than ever. Um, to get some, even if it's a day, you know, um, I know many of them will tell you, um, a day makes a difference because of the nature and their education needs, service needs. And I thank you all for your consideration and time for this. President Ellis, back to you.
Thank you, Ms. Corkadel. Um, a motion was made, uh, and seconded. Uh, Ms. Howell, can you reread it? Um, make sure everyone.
Yes, ma'am. I move that the superintendent prioritize implementation of his recommended hybrid in-person learning plan for small groups of identified priority students such as students with special needs, English language learners, students in our center of, centers of applied technology and students who are struggling in the virtual format. That this be commenced as soon as possible and that the superintendent be authorized to make exceptions to the boards previously adopted reopening directives in order to meet these objectives.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Smith.
Aye.
No, we're not voting. Just, do you have any?
Long night.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Can't sell the bag. No, no comment.
Um, um, Ms. Antoine.
Uh, thank you, President, uh, Ellis, and thank you, um, former President Corkadel. Um, so I, I appreciate this and, and intent of this particular motion. However, it's encased around some language that I disagree with. Bringing any of our students back in at this time without the proper parameters in place to include vaccin, vaccinated instructors to the staff members and otherwise without the results in, in this particular motion and there's just nothing about the health metrics. We are trading off the student's safety and health in order to bring them back in physically. This, I believe at this point in time, based on what I heard Dr. Arlato share, he has already decided to prioritize, prioritize these students as soon as he gets the go, which he got tonight. But that cannot be in the midst of this skyrocketing pandemic that endangers their lives. And therefore I am not planning to support the motion as written. If you're asking for an amendment, I'm still muttering over this one. Um, but for now, no. And then to allow Dr., um, something about Dr. Arlato, I have to reread it, but no, basically, no matter what we decided on tonight, he can, and Dr. Arla, Arlato can circumvent our decisions tonight in order to bring the students back in. I do not understand that the point of this is safe education. And I believe if anything outside of those safety parameters that have been set um, based on what we were introduced to tonight and previously with Dr., um, Dr. Kay, I think will endanger our students and I cannot support that. Thank you. And, and, and the teachers, because the teachers would then have to come in two weeks earlier than those students.
Thank you, Ms. Antoine. Um, uh, Mr. Silkworth.
Uh, I, I, I am in support of this motion. Uh, 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 we have all gotten emails from parents who have, uh, talked about the fact that their children or some of their children are struggling dramatically in the virtual environment. Um, there is flexibility here for Dr. Arlata. Uh, the, whatever decisions are made in terms of providing additional help to meet the needs, uh, it may not necessarily mean that they'll be back uh, in, in the school. It could mean other uh, interventions as determined by Dr. Arlata and his staff. We, uh, we must meet the needs of all of our, our children and, and, and I think I've gotten so many emails from frustrated parents who have children that need us to, uh, to continue to provide or provide additional support to them in whatever way we can based upon their needs to make sure that they struggle less and that they begin to be successful. So I am in support of this.
Thank you, um, Ms. Frank.
Um, I also support this motion. I, I think one of the concerns that was brought up, I don't know what it was. Um, this, this doesn't demand that, that they come back. It, it would be under the, the appropriate superintendent, correct? Um, and then, um, the other concern, um, for these small groups, ESO and, um, special needs and some of the groups that we're talking about, would those teachers need to be back two weeks ahead of time? Um, or, or could they come back with a smaller window because they are smaller groups?
Is that a question for Dr. Arlato, perhaps?
Yeah, I, I guess anybody who could answer.
Dr. Arlato.
Dr. Arlato here.
Well, I, I don't want to answer for Mrs. Corkadel because this is her motion and, and I didn't get a chance to talk with her ahead of time on the motion. Um, but in terms of how we would organize it, is I don't, I don't think there's a need for a majority of these teachers to come back two weeks before. Many of them had already been back in their buildings working with small groups of students in particular. For example, the Cat North teachers had already been back in their buildings and worked for several weeks with groups of students in the hybrid model. I don't think that I would need to require them to be back two weeks in advance.
Okay, great. Thank you. That was, um, that was all that I have. Thank you so much.
Ms. Schalheim.
Uh, yes, um, I'm gonna echo somewhat what, um, Ms. Antoine stated. I am on record multiple times and multiple votes, um, supporting small group, um, instruction, supporting Dr. Arlata's prioritization of this. I see this. I see this motion as repetitive and and unnecessary. And to to go back to. What Mr. Silkworth was saying about other methods, no, 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 because in the motion it says. You know, hybrid in-person instruction. That's not other ways, it's in-person instruction. We are at the highest. Level of 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 cases and the surge pre-vaccine right now. And because I'm on record multiple times as supporting these priority groups. Multiple times over the last 10 months, and I know that Dr. Lotto is already doing this. I don't see the need to direct him further and get into his lane further. I was I was prepared to give him back his lane. And almost almost submitted a motion to that effect for this evening. I see this as talking out both sides of our mouth a bit and. Are we directing him or are we not directing him? Are we directing him sometimes? I don't know. And so I can't I can't support this. Anyone who's reached out to me over the last 10 months is well aware that I support Dr. Lotto's previous and ongoing prioritization of these groups. And I just don't think that we need another motion to state that. Maybe for the folks who didn't get a vote on all those other things in the past because they're new to the board, maybe that's the purpose of this. And I suggest you go on record and state your 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 support of that if that's true. I just. Are we directing him or are we not directing him? I I'd love to give him back his lane. I I'm 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 with Ms. Antoine, I'm not going to be supporting this. For all those Special Ed, ESO, Cat North and South families out there listening at home. You know, I support you 100%. Dr. Lotto is already prioritizing you. And I'm not gonna circumvent his authority anymore this evening. Thank you very much.
Dr. Tobin.
Yeah, it was my understanding in our earlier discussions. And when Dr. Lotto made his initial recommendation tonight. That this was built in essentially to that discussion that he talked about prioritizing teachers. Prioritizing groups. I took it to mean that the groups that even though I was not on the board when it was voted, that were previously prioritized would be prioritized. That was previously discussed by the previously constituted board. So so yeah, I mean, I mean, I mean, I am inclined to think that this is stating something that's already embedded. But for those who are concerned about the language, I I may be reading it a little differently, but I think the. The language as soon as possible has embedded in it. Along with everything else, that there's not an intention as I read it or not an interpretation as I read it. In this motion to ever circumvent health. It is to prioritize who we focus on first. And and that may potentially be some of the confusion around this, what I like many thought would be a more straightforward conversation that. You know, the, as I thought we discussed earlier, the opening is not a boom, one day, everybody shows up. That this is a process that's gonna have to happen according to all the priorities that we had always understood. So so I guess I'm saying two things. I'm saying on the one hand, I I do think the motion states something that was already in the initial discussion. But on the other, for those, my own view of this is that this does not raise the specter of forcing. Anybody in before the the health recommendations would allow for it. It's simply which groups would be the first ones to come in. Would have the highest priority. So that's that's my read. Thank you.
Thank you. So I. I'm gonna go back to what I said earlier. When we had questions about some of our other motions, is this necessary? Or is is this already in place? Here's the thing. Normally, I completely agree with that. But this board has been hearing from so many in the community that are hurting for so many different reasons. We have. Students that are feeling isolated. We have students that are struggling academically. We have. We have. Teachers asking us, keep us safe, don't send us back until we have vaccines. We so many different heartfelt pleas from the community. And so we're dealing with something that we we can't do things the way we normally do them. I just looked, there's like 660 viewers on our YouTube channel right now and people are watching in other ways. This for tonight is the board's commitment to the community. The very first motion we passed this evening was. Supporting. The superintendent's recommendation. The second motion we passed was letting the community know. Yes, we can just call a meeting and we can just put put an update on the agenda. But that's not going to get out to the public. We if we do all of this behind the scenes. The community is not going to understand everything we're doing and the commitment that we have to them to help them, help our community through this. And so. These special groups. This board has stated time and again. That. We hear you and we we recognize and Dr. Lotto has repeatedly recognized. The need to really address their very unique concerns. So I don't think we are in any way taking away. Anything from Dr. Lotto. We are we are supporting him and letting him know the board is with you, please continue to to support these students. I have one question for you, Dr. Lotto. Would you do this in a manner that was against? The advice of the health officer?
No, ma'am. And I and I mentioned that earlier, that us, that we have plans built that have been previously approved. And we would get those approved again from the Department of Health to bring in small groups. Dr. Kalyanaraman has been very supportive of us having small groups or one-on-one. Service needs for students. And so I know that he'll continue to support us doing that work.
Thank you. So this is this is this is one more. Group in our community that we can reach and say, we hear you. We support getting you the help that you need as soon as is safely possible. I think we're all together on that idea. Dr. Lotto is clearly. Together with us on that. So for all those reasons, I do support the motion. Ms. Corkedell.
Thank you, President Ellis. I've been taking some notes like I normally do because I take all all my members and my colleagues. Considerations very seriously at all times. And so I just want to reiterate a couple of things I said in the intro. The problem with an intro sometimes is and then everybody's focusing on the language, not, you know, necessarily hearing, but. I just want to make sure that this is perfectly clear. I'm hearing the the why and I let me just try to condense it. Number one is. We have been separating these groups in our motions on this issue because of their unique urgent needs. And I don't think we need to define that. And I but I do, you know, what those needs are, but I do think tonight. But I do think it's important that we continue to recognize this publicly. To avoid some confusion in a sense, because all of a sudden we're going to stop. And so I could already hear and see, I believe, the emails going, well, you've always reiterated us and now all of a sudden you didn't tonight. And what does that leave us with? I'm also going to point out that this actually is, as I had stated in my intro, some of our previous motions had actually. Created directives beyond the, you know, encouragement for the as soon as possibles. And and this kind of cleans it up a little bit. And. Lastly. I'm just gonna point out that this motion actually has less superintendent directives than the one just adopted. And the one before that. So I don't believe we're adding to it. I believe we are. I believe enforcing our commitment as a team to recognize that. We are not just an all. All doesn't just mean therefore we don't prioritize. All does mean we do take into account the unique needs of each of our groups, of our students, because they're all individuals. But we have to recognize that their needs have to be addressed immediately. Lastly, I just. I. Do disagree with my fellow members. In the assertion that this motion. Or any action of this board would trade the health and well-being of anyone in our community at any moment in time for any reason. I would never make that assumption. I would personally never. Despair our staff or our community. Because our community knows that we would never do that. And I believe this motion of reaffirming. What we've already done before unanimously, I might point out in some occasions and most occasions actually. And really regards to the the groups that we're speaking to. But I I do take a little bit of point of issue that anybody would ever think for any moment, for any reason, that we would ever trade off our health for our children. I just think for anybody to hear that. From us is 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 a little discerning to me. That anyone would walk away from this meeting thinking that. We are all invested in the interest of the health and safety of our children at all times. And I think the previous two, as well as this one, adds to our commitment publicly and will hold ourselves accountable mutually. This is mutual accountability, sometimes you gotta say it out loud. We've all written, I I I know many of our members have been well engaged in policies and legislation passed. So I really do think that reiteration emphasis is is important from time to time. And if there ever were any groups on this planet that needs to hear from their educators that they are important, I would say it's this group. And I would just encourage you, vote, vote your heart. Vote your mind with your mind and conscience. Really consider the small groups that I'm talking about. Not any one member's preferences. Thank you, Madam President. And I just want to point out that I I am prepared to call a call the question if if there's an interest in other round.
I think we can vote.
Ms. Corkedell.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Antoine.
Nay.
Mr. Silkworth.
Aye.
Ms. Frank.
Aye.
Ms. Schellheim. Dr. Tobin.
Aye.
Ms. Ellis.
Aye.
Six one, motion passes.
Dr. Tobin.
Yes. Just by way of a bit of introduction before I make this motion. We have heard, obviously, from many, 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 many families and students. And a number of those are. Parents and in some cases students who are deeply concerned that for various reasons, they simply are not thriving. In virtual. And as has been shown in our discussion tonight, there is going to have to be a process as we move through back to hybrid. And so I think it's important to note that we've heard these concerns. And and all the various reasons that there are students out there who are really, really struggling with virtual. Who who may not be a part of the prioritized groups that we're talking about. But that still need support. And so that is why I'm proposing the following motion. In light of the concerns raised by many parents and students. I move that Anarondal County Public Schools work with school staff and families in a manner to to be determined by the superintendent. In order to identify students who are not successful in the virtual environment so that appropriate resources and interventions can be developed. In addition to any that those students may already be receiving. And. Thank you. This, just to say, this goes to some extent to something Mr. Smith raised a while back, which was the needs assessment. But it is a way of reaching out and identifying those students that are going to need extra support because as we've discussed tonight. Vaccination will take its time, groups will have to come in, none of this can happen on a dime. So that's why I propose this motion, thank you.
Second. Ms. Corkedell.
Thank you, President Ellis. Thank you, Dr. Tobin. I I'm just gonna say briefly basically what I said to to Ms. Frank. I greatly appreciate this because these are hitting all the cores, I think. Not all of them, but hitting our core groups and making sure, and by hitting them, I mean making sure. That not only are we cognizant of it, but we are are living it. We are demonstrating it, we are acting it. And we are being responsive. So I think this adds to the spirit and intent of our motions this evening. Thank you so very much. I have no comment to its merit and I do plan on supporting it as as writ.
Ms. Antoine. No, no, Mr. Smith, apologies.
Aye, no, I'm kidding. No, I would just say I'm so glad, this is basically a needs assessment, right? It doesn't stipulate what we're trying to find. It doesn't stipulate what we're trying to find, but I'm so glad that hopefully, we can finally get a needs assessment. You know, if we're going to reopen, let's make sure we reopen for the students that need it the most. I would gladly give up my seat for a student that truly needs to be a back-in-person. And I hope that this gets passed tonight. So thank you, Dr. Tobin, for introducing this.
Ms. Antoine?
Thank you, Dr. Tobin. Now, this one, I can certainly fully support. It allows for some real, for lack of a better term, some in-depth metrics to come back to the superintendent to determine who should be prioritized in this environment, in addition to the small groups of prioritization that he has already tonight said he was going to do, especially those struggling in the, especially those who have all of a sudden, "I'm struggling here." It allows for that. I would also point out that this level of assessment needs to be done for us as the Board of Education so that we can get some true hardcore numbers back to us about what's going on in our school system. So I appreciate the motion and the structure of it as well. Thank you.
Mr. Silkworth?
Yes, I'd like to thank Dr. Tobin for the motion. I am totally in support of this motion. I want to make it clear, I want everybody to know that our teachers, our staff, our principals, assistant principals, guidance counselors, PPW workers, Dr. Alata and his staff, they are already providing resources and interventions. We are in a difficult time. I don't want somebody to read into this motion that, "You mean, you're not doing that?" That is not the case. The case is that we are in a very, very special time, a time where our students have special needs. Some of our parents and our students are, they are almost desperate, based upon some of the emails that we get, for additional services. They need to know, if they're listening, that Anarondale County Public Schools is listening to you, and we will help and we will provide you additional resources to help you as you navigate this virtual learning environment right now. And so having said that, I am totally in support of this. Thank you, Dr. Tobin.
Ms. Frank?
I definitely agree with what many of my colleagues have stated, and I just want to commend Dr. Tobin. Just a really articulate way to take the concerns of the community and come up with just an absolutely fantastic motion, and just really, you know, finding the needs of the community and giving us something really great to work with. I really appreciate that, and I'm excited to really participate in giving people what I feel that they truly have asked, as in what they need. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Scholheim?
Yes, I want to point out for all those people watching at home, this is what we asked for and unfortunately, didn't pass in a previous iteration of this board, and that was brought to us by Mr. Smith. So if Mr. Smith was in any way an inspiration for the current motion, thank you, Dr. Tobin, then I'm grateful for that. I do like this. I have one area of concern I would love to address right now, and that is the word "success." So I'm a straight A student. I'm still getting straight As in distance learning, but I'm having a meltdown and put my head down on the table and turn off my camera, because I cry every day while I'm doing my work. And even though that's not reflective in the grades, that is what is occurring. So I caution, I caution the word of the use, the use of the word "success," and I would like us to better define that, because success is not always grades. And I am speaking personally about this, based on my own child and her peers' reaction to distance learning. You might be doing very well, making the grades, doing the work, and melting down way more than you ever have before, ever. And so I do, I do pause with that word. I will likely support this. I would like it better defined, and the interest of time and not being wordsmithed and picked at to death, I'll let Dr. Tobin determine how best to proceed. I just want it on record that that is indeed a very big concern of mine. And if we're doing, if we're in this motion defining, I know that it says in a manner to be determined by the superintendent, but then it has the word "successful." So I just want it on record that success is not necessarily the grades you're making. Thank you.
Yeah, my first read-through on this motion, I saw "successful" and thought academic, but that's not, I don't, I don't have an issue with the wording, because I don't think that, that our teachers, our guidance counselors will think that a student who is excelling, but having extreme anxiety in reaching out to their guidance counselor is successful on virtual learning. I don't think anyone will see that as successful. The trick here is a student who, the student like Ms. Scholheim described, perhaps a straight A student flying academically, how do they, how is that student identified as struggling? So this is my plea to the community and anyone who's listening. I wish everyone would take a look at the town hall that I was able to host a few days ago, and listen to the students and parents' stories about this, about exactly what we're talking about. Really emotional. And so I am so, so, so grateful for this motion, Dr. Tobin. But for those of you listening, if you feel like you are struggling in any way, not just academically, students, please reach out, reach out to your guidance counselor. If you don't feel that you're getting the support you need from your guidance counselor, and that is not me saying our guidance counselors aren't doing an amazing job, but sometimes there's a disconnect, our guidance counselors are overwhelmed too, reach out to your teacher, reach out to your principal, but please reach out and know that we're listening, and you will get the help you need. We are all committed to that. And I'll leave it with that. Thank you, Dr. Tobin.
So it's me, right? So I will tell you, I am perfectly happy to substitute the word "struggling" for "successful," if that would be amenable. But I will also say that it's written into certainly my understanding and all that I've ever heard discussed by Dr. Alato and his staff, that success is not just about grades, that it is a thriving human being. And so if there are those on the board who feel strongly about changing the language to "struggling," I'm absolutely happy to do it. And I think it's a point well-taken. I mean, I think that we have heard, I would say, while I've certainly heard plenty of families concerned about their children's grades, I've heard far more concern about the emotional and social well-being. And Mr. Smith was speaking to this earlier. And so struggling here is a whole thing. It's just what it means to be in this world. And as Ms. Ellis said, there certainly, there are those students out there who are saying, "You know what? This virtual thing really works for me. It's taken a lot of social stress off me." But, you know, humans are vastly different creatures in many ways. And so for every one of those, there may be five for whom it's a real detriment. So I, someone can help me with my Robert's Rules, but if I'm, as the motion maker, prepared to simply change the word, to take the suggestion and change the word to "struggling," is that possible? Or do we have to have a withdrawal?
We need an amendment, because I'm not sure we have full agreement on it.
Okay.
We have it on the table, so the next step would be to introduce an amendment.
Okay. I thought I might get away with a technical change, but...
I could tell you thought that.
Thought I'd try.
I would like to ask for unanimous consent to substitute the word, no, to replace the word "not successful" with the word "struggling" in Ms. and Dr. Tobin's motion.
I, I'm not, I'm no. I don't think that works.
So we needed amendment on the table.
Yeah.
I'll move to amend it to do exactly what Dr. Tobin said. I hope, I think we don't need to restate it. I think it's pretty clear. So that's a motion, if I have a second.
Second?
Okay, we have an amendment on the table. So it does need to be clearly stated. I don't, I just heard the word "struggling." I'm looking at the motion myself. Oh, instead of "not successful," we say "struggling" is the amendment. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So we have an amendment. Okay, Ms. Corkedell?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Dr. Tobin, on the consensus thing. But I wanted to speak on the amendment in particular that is now on the table. And that is that the word "struggling" has a negative connotation. It implies an inability to kind of take care of what, you know, struggling has implications in and of itself. And so if the goal is, is the vagueness of "successful" being clarified, I think struggle has equal ambiguity. And then second, I am never a fan with using negative, words that have negative connotations possibly imposed on our students. And I think honestly, in regular times, I wouldn't be so sensitive to that of categorizing them as the "struggling kids." However, I think under the current mental state of affairs, that there would be more of a willingness for a child to admit that they are not as successful as they want to be, as opposed to approaching our staff with the fact of an admittance of struggle. And so although simple, that's why I was kind of shaking my head there, because I don't feel it's a tech at it, because it does change how, at least, I would read it. And I think that, I think my kids would even read it as. I want to just make sure that we are not creating any barriers. And I think the word "successful" is not, just as you had stated, exactly what the staff uses and the education industry uses as kind of the standard, is we want them to be successful, those who are not successful, as successful as we want them to be, because it's an empowering word of success. It is a natural instinct of humans to want to be successful. And struggles are not things that the school system can always help with, but the success in the virtual environment is. And so I will be a no on the amendment and still a yes on the motion, even if passed, even if the amendment does pass. I think it's important we pass it, but I'm not going to be in favor of the amendment itself. Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
I think the amendment is merited as we have used the word "struggling" before. Case in point, the amendment we just passed, prioritize students such as students with special needs in this language learners, students in centers of applied technology, and students who are struggling in the virtual format. No further comment.
Ms. Antoine?
Sorry, guys, too many buttons. I have no comment.
Mr. Silkworth?
Well, you know, we're getting into an area of semantics here. I, my opinion is more in line with Ms. Corkedell in terms of being positive. I think the word "successful" is clearly more, I understand we used the word "struggling" before. Again, I think it's semantics. I will, I would rather have "successful," so I will not support the amendment.
Ms. Frank?
I would have gone with consensus, but I think that Ms. Corkedell brings up a good point, and if it has to come to a vote, I'm going to agree with "successful."
Ms. Scholheim, you made the amendment?
I just want to speak, so whenever that is.
I'm just asking, you were the most, the amendment, you proposed the amendment, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So I think, oh, Dr. Tobin, you haven't spoken to the amendment yet, right?
No, I don't, I don't think I have. This may be terrible. I sort of see both sides of it. I'm somewhat agnostic. I do understand, as I said, my own view is that "successful" is a more encompassing term than "grades." And I think there's merit in what's been said about more positive language. And so I'm, if I have to vote on it, I'll probably stick with the original language.
And yeah, I'm right where Ms. Frank was, where when I heard it, I was like, "Fine, I'm fine with consensus." It was semantics until Ms. Corkedell spoke, and to me, made a valid point that I hadn't considered. So I agree with that, so I will not be voting for the amendment. And I believe, Ms. Scholheim? And you're on mute. You are on mute.
Yes, I heard you. I find it more than a little ironic that we just used the word "struggling" in the previous motion. I mean, literally just like an hour ago. So if it was, if it was so negative and had such a weird connotation then, it's my, I had to step away for a second, so I didn't vote on that, on that motion, because I had to step away to deal with things on the home front, which will always be my priority. The, I find it more than a little ironic that suddenly, we're getting into a semantic argument about what is and what is not uplifting, seeing as we just used that language, you know, 10 seconds ago, a New York second ago. So I'm bewildered and frustrated. I see some hypocrisy there. I do want to say that our students are not shy about how they're feeling right now. And if we all read emails, and I know we have, because we've, there's... And if we all read emails, um, and I know we have, because we, we've, there's, you know, there's, there's been, uh, there's been some pretty powerful ones lately. The, the kids are not, are not shy about, um, talking about their struggles, okay? Their struggles, not their lack of success, their struggles. That's how they are characterizing this and the many quotes I could read right now um, from, from students directly. And so, um, like everything else, I'm sure this will, uh, get picked to death and, you know, well, well, they've all had, um, a great night, um, wordsmithing, uh, the, the bejesus out of this. But I, I just find it ironic and bizarre that we suddenly have a problem with this word when we, when y'all didn't a second ago. Um, and I've never heard a student, uh, that's written to me or called me or emailed me state ever, um, "I don't feel as successful today." No, they're saying, "I am struggling. My grades are good, but I'm a mess," you know? And so I just want to point that out. And I'm, you know, whether or not this goes anywhere is sort of irrelevant at this point. I want to be on record with exactly how I feel about this. I'm not going to mince words or apologize for it either. Thank you.
All right, uh, Ms. Howell, thank you.
Do I need to re-read the motion with the proposed amendment?
Uh, to read, I, the amendment is to replace the word
Not successful.
With struggling. Yes. Ms. Corkedel?
Nay.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Antoine?
Aye.
Mr. Silkworth?
Nay.
Ms. Frank?
Nay.
Ms. Scholheim?
Aye.
Dr. Tobin?
Nay.
And Ms. Ellis?
Nay.
Motion fails three, five.
So, uh, we still have the motion on the table. Um, has everyone spoken to the motion? I believe so. We're ready to vote.
Ms. Corkedel?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Antoine?
Aye.
Mr. Silkworth?
Aye.
Ms. Frank?
Aye.
Ms. Scholheim?
Aye.
Dr. Tobin?
Aye.
Ms. Ellis?
Aye.
Motion passes eight, zero.
All right, um, those are all of the motions that I have, um, before me. So I believe we are ready to conclude.
Motion to, I move to adjourn.
Second?
Um, President Ellis?
Yes?
If I may, I think this is warranted. Um, I'd be remiss if we didn't honor the birthday and legacy of Dr. King that is fast approaching us. So I think everyone, please use the Monday holiday not as a day off, but as a day of service. I'm gonna use this as a shameful plug for the Let's Talk Justice Initiative that's coming up on Monday. Students from all across the county will be reading books, um, to elementary schoolers. And I'm gonna be reading, um, I, Matthew Henson. So any elementary schoolers, please just look out for the communication that came out from AACBS today. And also, you know, it's, it's a day on, not a day off. I'm just thinking about the life and legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.
One hundred. Thank you, Drake.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Great reminder. Um, and so, um, the next time we will meet will be on Tuesday. The, I'm sorry, don't have the date in front of me. Is that the nineteen, eighteen, nineteen?
Nineteenth.
Nineteenth Tuesday, um, for our budget workshop. Thank you all. Have a great evening.